It is two o'clock and this meeting is called to order. Real call is that our four trustees are here, trustee class is on the screen. Our assistant director, business manager, and treasurer are all here. So we will now go on to the pledge of allegiance. I was over there. Thanks. We will now go on to public comments. Speakers, state your name and community and speak for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of stability and decorum appropriate for a public meeting. No personal attacks or disruptions from audience members will be tolerated. Our first speaker is Mariana Cochran.
You want it there?
I'm guessing so.
Good afternoon. Mariana Cochran-Rathron. I've had another birthday since seeing you all last, so I'm getting more nostalgic in my dotage. So I was reminiscing about the last time I attended a CLN board meeting at the library with April 2023. That was two birthdays ago, so I was younger, thinner, and wasn't so white haired. But more importantly, it was the last meeting before the May 2023 CLN trustee election. From that meeting, I clearly remember the public scathing rebuke to the board regarding board majorities' months-long denials about sexually explicit books for minors and the board's disingenuous and belatedly reluctant attempts to address the issue. Oh, what an adventure it's been in the ensuing nineteen months, frozen in bursting pipes, being less traumatic than the rest. In many ways, CLN's wrestling to address the degradation of a library's collection for minors is a microcosm of our country's cultural rot. The results of the November 2024 national election were a referendum rejecting the left's rampant institutional capture and the ensuing deterioration. So the voters asserted this must stop. Their repudiation includes the same issues we face locally and which this current board majority has valiantly fought to correct. Additionally, our local conservative state representatives were all reelected, and even fewer Democrats statewide will be sent to Boise. So within Cootney County, throughout Idaho, and nationally, the tide is turning back toward reason and sanity. Although I am one voice here today, I also represent the several hundred subscribers and followers of Clean Books for Kids who support this board majority's attempts to clean up the collection for minors. Trustee Robinson, I have an email from you from less than two weeks ago wherein you state, quote, "I'm excited to give the new director a chance to clean up our libraries and make the CLN complying with the new law," unquote. So I hope it's gratifying for your fellow board members to hear your support, since you often don't vote accordingly. Perhaps you've had a recent change of heart. It would be welcomed. As a final reminiscent reference today, do we all remember the swarms of Yellowjackets since past summer? Seems they were especially abundant this year, spoiling picnics and patio parties. I was stung on the same foot twice within a month by those buggers. But despite the bothersome pests, it was a productive summer, especially for this board. I'm impressed and grateful that you persisted and maintained momentum on policy revisions despite the many dive bombers swarming around you, including a horrific queen bee hell-bent on destroying the entire hive. This board majority is to be lauded for your dedication and perseverance in an otherwise thankless job. But righteousness is its own reward, so you are abundantly wealthy in my eyes. Thank you.
Thank you. So the audience will please give respect to whoever's speaking, just like they would like. Next, we have Nancy Harper.
My name's Nancy Harper, and I live in Coeur d'Alene, but I live five minutes from the Haven Library, so I use it almost exclusively. So I feel like some of the policies that you put into effect affect me, because it affects the library I go to all the time. And I was at your meeting in Post Falls last month. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about is I really feel, I feel that you don't need to do anything more to the adult section. I think that trying to pull out different genres out of the adult section is kind of like trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. I think that if you have knowledge of libraries, if you've talked to librarians, it's very, very rare that a minor is going to wander into the adult section just to find some smut. With the, in the culture that we live in today and the way libraries are, they can find smut anywhere. I think that leaving the adult section right now, and maybe you just want to do it as a test. Say, hey, let's just, the adult section is curated, leave it, let's see if we have any problems. One thing I do want to talk about is when you discussed the possibility of having a general section, so that people or kids, whoever, could go and find cookbooks or how-to books, that kind of thing. To me, that's the nonfiction section. And when you think about it, nonfiction, I'm just going to read out my paper here. Here are all the things that are in the nonfiction that I think someone between the ages, specifically of fourteen and seventeen, who would be in that minor group, need. These are things they need to access. Math, science, physics, chemistry, history, applied sciences, medicine, travel, poetry, religion, philosophy, social science, art, biography. This section also is where they can go to find out about careers, all of that. So one of the things I just wanted to say today is, in looking at the different library cards, possibly there could be, I know that you were just going to go to an adult card and a minor card, but maybe there could be something like a minor plus, where that person with that card could also access nonfiction, or maybe there's another way to figure it out. But I was just thinking, you know, if the minor is zero to seventeen, and you have like a sixteen or seventeen-year-old coming in, driving to the library themselves after school to get a biography to make a report, right now, they would need an adult to go into that section and get for them, or be with them when they got it. And I think there, maybe there's a way to figure that out.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Richardson.
Good afternoon. I'm Jean Richardson. I live in Haven, and I only have a couple of brief comments. The first is that, in my opinion, it would behoove the board to appoint a trustee with more diverse viewpoints to represent and give voice to the broader community. At least it would give this current board the appearance of a more fair and balanced reflection of the population without threatening the conservative majority. My other comment is that, in regards to a meeting a couple of months ago, when Meghan Dartis-Coombs suggested the possibility of CLN incorporating a social work program at no cost to CLN, that I would like to bring that up again as a wonderful suggestion, because the libraries currently offer all kinds of support other than books. They have computer support, they have tech support, and social services is even offered to students in the elementary and middle and high schools. So it would be a relief if people could go and get some suggestions from a social worker who would be traveling, not necessarily full-time in any library, but like I said, it would be zero cost to the library, and it would relieve some of the stress off of the already overworked librarians who currently have to try to be everything, everybody, all the time. So please seriously take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Lippert.
Chair Addison, Director, Trustees. My name's Michelle Lippert. I'm from Post Falls, Idaho. I'm speaking today because I applied for the vacancy, and I didn't receive an invitation to do a presentation before you, so I thought I would give you my credentials. I've served for twenty-four years as an elected trustee with the Post Falls School Board. I understand Robert's Rules of Order, open meeting laws, what a healthy, well-functioning board looks like. I mean, I'm not saying that we didn't have some crises during my twenty-four years. We had the Great Recession, huge cutbacks in funding to the school district. We had COVID, which turned everything on its side. But I know what it means to be an elected trustee. I know what a healthy board looks like. My second point in terms of my credentials is I've lived here for thirty-six years. And this is what I know about Cootney County. It's way more diverse than most people believe. There are a variety of different political points of view, religious points of view, nonreligious points of view. And I think, like Jean just said, for a board to have some voices for that other fraction of the community would be an important voice to be heard on this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Rose.
Good afternoon. I am addressing the new board appointment decision. To start, number one, this board majority as fiduciaries has been mismanaging public resources ever since they have been elected. Number two, it has driven off a highly skilled and qualified director. Three, it has imposed their personal religious ideology upon a secular public institution. Four, when a qualified and competent attorney was available to hire, this board majority altered policy so it could hire their ideologically-aligned friend, a person who lacked the appropriate legal knowledge to provide solid library counsel for the CLN. Five, your actions have motivated numerous complaints to be filed once again against your decisions with the Americans United for the Separation Church and State. CLN patrons deserve a board makeup that represents the network's diverse constituency. Despite Tom Hamlin's disrespectful and inappropriate public proclamation, quote, "They are not deserving of consideration, just toss them aside." To the three applicants asking for an appointment consideration during the lost trustee opening, with Michelle Lippert being one of these applicants, Ms. Lippert definitely does deserve equal and fair consideration. This community has endured an unrelenting supply of poor-quality candidates endorsed by the KCRCC being elected. It's time for competency and quality on this board. Ms. Lippert is a highly qualified and skilled applicant. She is just, fair, and discerning. She would add proven quality and skilled service to this board's composition, having served as a government board trustee for over twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bill Green.
My name's Bill Green. I'm Courtney Knight. I want to thank you guys for your service. I know you must put in a lot of hours figuring a lot of things out. You don't get paid for it, except for those physical graces, I guess. And so I don't have a lot of comments. I just wanted to remark on one of the things I'm really grateful for, for the library. Just dawned on me as I was sitting here, thinking about if I wanted to make a comment. And that is your provision for free language learning experiences to the CLN. If you have a library card, you get free access to a really good language learning program. And I only have certain languages, and so I'm really taking advantage of that, and I thank, I'm grateful for that. And I kind of think of language, learning languages as a great bridge. Learning someone else's personal language, whether you're in English or Spanish or any language, or just in your own language, learning someone else's kind of way of seeing the world, what makes sense to them, what's important to them, what touches their heart, what their struggles are. Learning someone else's language is really a great bridge to unity. And so I, it was just thinking that I've been working on learning another language, and I'm really grateful that the library provides that service for free. Or really, I mean, there's lots of language programs around. I think one you guys have is called Mango. In Mango, so all kinds of color on the end to represent all their fights with the countries. So I'm grateful for that, and I can always thank, grateful for you guys and your service. And this issue that's kind of going around a lot of what's in the library, I actually saw a book once that was in the library. Someone gave it to me, says, "Look at this." And I could hardly read half of the page. It was just too much. So I know that there has been in the past books that were there somewhere that were not, I don't think, appropriate. And I don't know, I don't know how's the law about what is appropriate, what isn't. In terms of child development, I've always wondered what possible good is there in a six-year-old or a seven-year-old looking at all kinds of descriptions, very explicit things which had nothing to do with playing with their friends on the playground, playing in their dirt, playing Legos, being out with their parents and their friends. Those are the things that kids need for their development. And to interject, the whole other energy system is just, I think, not helpful. They're only, you know, nine, ten, five, six, seven, eight years old. When they get to be teenagers and young adults, and all that stuff starts happening, and all the hormones start flying, that's the time to have education. And they are beginning it anyway before that. But I just think that kids during those early stages, their whole interests are so focused on their friends, on learning skills, on developing their own sense of identity, initiative, autonomy, all the psychological terms that everybody knows. That's what's important. Anyway, thanks. And thanks again for the, yours great, for your great service.
Thank you. So that is the end of our list. I think we still have a little bit of time left. If anyone else wanted to speak? All right, hearing none, then we'll move on to the next section, which is the consent agenda. Trustee Hannah?
I only found one. The, here's a minor error. For the minutes from October seventeenth, on page two, at the very bottom, it reads, I won't read the whole sentence, but with the new law, House Rule 710, on preventing materials harmful to minors, I imagine the word should be getting into minors' hands, should be squeezed in there. Something that nature just doesn't read right. Otherwise, I couldn't find any other. I have no other findings on these two agendas as far as the consent agenda. Can you repeat where it is? I can do that.
Yes, please.
That was for the October seventeenth minutes on page two at the very bottom, the very last line. I think we need to squeeze in the word harmful to minors, getting in the, yeah, probably getting into minors' hands. That's all. I wish, I think I've heard one of these times. We might be very exacting, so I'm doing that. It's kind of nitpicking, but. I need to.
I'm present, so on the CIN income statement, I didn't, I don't think I noticed any of the figures. I didn't have fresh monofingers, but they didn't necessarily align with the analysis explanation. So that'd be number six, eighteen, which I think actually may have been transposed with line number twenty-two. Line number twenty, twenty-two, and thirty-two.
Yeah, there are some adjustments actually there. I guess the most significant one would be like really sixty thousand dollars for ebooks. That was, I think, most of the transaction, the expenses occurred in September. So the fifty thousand, there's a fifty thousand dollar check from CLN, and then ten thousand Coeur d'Alene was deposited in Overdrive in October. That's on the revenue side. And then there was no transaction in October, but in September, the fifty thousand check was sent to Overdrive in November. Ten thousand we sent, the ten was sent over. So it's just a question of the overlap of the two months. In the next month, there would be a saving from November, which we didn't announce. So it was just the timing of incoming and outgoing of those numbers.
Yeah, I didn't know if the analysis was part of the permanent record or not, but I just figured, okay, well, those are the estimates before they're in the record.
I'll make it certainly. I just have the notes here that were, too, I think they don't. As far as number six, the Liberty Lake, the check wasn't received in the mail in November for the annual dues for the career costs. So it was not deposited in October, a separate invoice for legal fees decreasing the current cost fifty percent. So again, it's just the time, it's the timing, it's the time, whether they hit in the October, the inventory statement, so.
Chair.
Trustee class?
I was going to ask on item thirty-three of the CIN, legal and professional fifteen hundred. What was that? And I, could you clarify if CIN has an attorney that they use? Or, but anyway, I didn't know we did legal, CIN did legal, needed legal services.
So that one was for the issue we have with the courier. So when there was some concern with the courier contract, and in order to facilitate dealing with that, we brought a, CIN brought an attorney on board for the retainer. I think it's in the notes there. They don't actually have one on retainer all the time, so it was just brought in for that purpose.
I think there are no further questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to accept consent agenda. The trustee.
Before, I forgot the financial statements were part of the consent agenda. That's why I jumped in. I moved that we approved the consent agenda, that would be changed or as amended.
Okay, it has been moved that we accept the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so it is unanimously accepted with the, with the amendment, so with the changes, notice. All right, so next, we are going on to the Community Library Network, October twenty-four, financial statements. Questions or comments? Trustee Robinson?
I'd just like to ask if the staff have anything to highlight on them.
Not particularly, I mean, just whatever's in the notes. And I mean, there's always going to be some lines which, you know, it's like some of the subscriptions and things that are paid on every, whatever. So, you know, even if supposedly at nine percent, some that are going to be higher is because the payment is made now, which is taking up then for the, say, like four to two quarters. And there, so I think everything is on contract to that nine percent.
Okay, I wanted to thank the CLN friends and the Post Fall friends for their donation for Apple reopening and our Post Falls reopening. Trustee Annie?
Yeah, I have one question. Do we finalize the carry forward for the end of fiscal twenty twenty-four? It was, it was insured for a long time, for the last two months or so. And although did we finally sort through all the, I know it was learning curve for people and change of directors. So this would, you know, if we, if we come with a final read-forward balance. And do we only get a sheet on that? I think we do. So unfortunately, we haven't settled the carryover yet. It's now on the top of the list of things, so it shouldn't be too much longer.
Chair.
I had a trust class.
Um, a couple of comments on number fifteen. I'm pleased to see by reading the note that we're actually showing now as income the money that came in from ICRA, so there were two checks there noted on fifteen. So that's the way I think it should be done. It's money we receive. It should be reported as income. And I guess miscellaneous is fine. I continue to be totally confused, not necessarily from CLN, but number six, U R D closed. Why the heck can't the U R D get attacked together and finish this? Are they finding, does somebody have an explanation? Are they finding money under, in a box that they finally cleared out? Or why do they keep finding forty-five dollars to send us when they closed over a year ago? Then on forty-five, I'll just list them real quick, and then you can come, come back. On forty-five, repairs and maintenance post falls. I'm still a little bit confused on whether we're mixing money from insurance. So that one, I think, it didn't really say anything, but it, is any of that CL or ICRA money that is using to do the, the contract work for Post Falls? And then fifty-nine, I guess I got my answer when I dug into it more. I put a note there, bank service charges. This seemed unusual, but I guess you can maybe make a comment. Is, is this really just because we lost, we were lost control of some credit cards when staff changed, or is, does this kind of thing happen very often? Those are my questions. Thanks.
So just, yeah, so the Post, the Post Falls, I think what we'll see is that, so the expenses have to be made. And then at a later time, we'll see the ICRA money, you know, being applied to that. So it can't be helping expended in the expense line, even if ICRA ended up paying for it. So that, that number, that number will be higher than the percentage at this point in the fiscal year, but it'll end up coming back. But now that we've separated those lines, it should make it a little bit clearer, one side crimp and, and what we're spending. But no matter what we have, we're going to pay these invoices on our expense line, and then ICRA would be reversing that. And the question about, yeah, the bank charge, yeah, I know that, no, that's not, that's not normal. It's not regular. It is specifically because of our, as far as the, the changeover with the business manager and that time lost. And then some of those credit card charges getting away from us, but we touched base with them, and they're going to credit the accounts in the following statement, so it should, it should settle itself. And I think the first one was the, the number six. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't explored the number six, the U R D close, why they're, why they're continuing that, or why that's showing up that way. So we'll have to report back on that.
And treasurer?
Just to verify, number fifteen, income miscellaneous, I, it is correct. It has always, should have been sitting in income. It's something that we've been talking about for a couple of months. And we were waiting on the auditor to confirm that, and the auditor confirmed it as well, which is why that finally got moved over. And we were just discussing that we are going to be moving, changing, reclassing, calling it income ICRA funds and not leaving it in miscellaneous, just for clarity's sake, is what else I just wanted to address that.
I had a question on number thirty-eight. I had a question on number thirty-eight. Says that we purchased a welding helmet. Would you have a welder on staff?
That's probably just added to Brian's repertoire of materials that he have. So he obviously has a little bit more space now. I think if I understand correctly, he has more room at the hidden branch for his equipment and being able to work on those things. So I think that's just a piece of equipment for him. Obviously, in the library world, there's a lot of metal shelving and things of that sort, to cut down a metal shelf to a different height and parts welding and things of that sort.
Sure.
I guess, trusty boss.
So I'm moving on to the balance sheet. I don't know if we're doing that. Kind of is all one thing. I was just, under current assets, property tax receivable, the third item. I wonder if I can get an explanation. Is that money that the county has said they're gonna pay us? It hasn't been received or something was overlooked? Or I don't remember seeing something about current assets, property tax receivable. What that is. And then which fund under other assets? Is it in ICS nine twelve? Where the iCrimp money is? Or did, or are we gonna put that in a separate fund? Is that what you're saying? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Probably gonna defer to the business manager.
Okay. My understanding, so under assets, it's sitting there under property tax receivables. That's where it's supposed to remain. Does that help answer your question, trustee?
Well, I normally, when it's receivable, it means it's an asset that we can count on. It's coming, but what, why, why they pay us two times a year plus there's a monthly, is this a monthly that's coming in? It just hasn't been received or what? Why is it there?
It is not a monthly. It is twice a year. She is just showing it as an asset just because it is an asset. But I understand, it's just the wording of receivables. I understand that's confusing. But it is the twice a years. It is an asset. It's just not something that we're gonna be seeing on a monthly basis.
No, but it was received in, at the end of July. So it's now in ICS. It shouldn't be there. I just, maybe next month, you can explain why it's listed as property tax receivable. Usually that means an accounting, it's checks in the mail or something.
Trusty boss, did you say it showed up in the July? Income?
They paid it, they paid us on July twenty-fifth. We got like three million dollars. So that's not this. And that, that is part of the money that's in the carry, this funding to carry forward and that's in the ICS right now. So it's, that, that's not the twice a year payment. I just, I don't know what it is.
Thank you, trustee plus. That is at the top of my list. That's the next thing that I will be addressing and I'll give you more information at next month's analysis. Will that be helpful?
If there are no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion. Do you accept the Community Library Network, October twenty twenty-four, financial statements?
I moved that we accept the CLN October twenty twenty-four financial statements.
It has been moved that we accept the CLN October twenty twenty-four financial statements. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that was unanimous and the CLN Network, October twenty twenty-four, or CLN, October twenty twenty-four financial statements are accepted. We will now move on to our director's report.
Thank you. Just a few things to report. That Harrison project, we had an onsite meeting, all parties, architect, contractors, facilities, with the director, director. And that was on November eighth. And the starting of the project was November the eleventh. And the contract is for forty-five calendar days per completion date. So that's supposed to be completed on December twenty-sixth. So there's always room for a bit of change there, but that's what the contract is. And then no closure was necessary. We're making use of an alternate entrance. If you've been to Harrison and it's just the other door, they're gonna go past the front ramp that we're working on. And then they just go past that on the grass towards the other side door. And then we'll be able to keep the library open as normal to update constructions. The Apple reopening was on November twelfth. I think it was a very good turnout. I just want to thank Randy and Lindsay specifically for all the work they put in over the year, getting everything ready. Megan, thanks for the event itself. And of course, Casey and the whole Apple team, you know, making that day and prepping everything. And also, quite often forgot is Mark, who handles all the tech. You can't open a library without all the tech ready to go. So so it was great to be opening and we're certainly looking forward to post falls, which is slotted through December ninth. So far, things be going along well. And sorry, no, December nine. I said November nine, December nine. It's the post-fall reopening. So that means the mineral drive facility that we've been using is basically almost entirely exited. I'm actually still there, but that ends maybe this evening. So by the end of this week, mineral drive, there'll be no a district staff there and everything's been cleared out as far as I know. There's a few things will be, few material items will be moved out next week. But that'll be the end of our time in the mineral drive, which again was very helpful, thanks to all who made that possible. Just a few words about CIN. There have been some courier changes. I know we mentioned it in previous meetings. So we do, the courier we had is left. We have a new courier in place. We've gone sort of a short-term contract. We will fill in in immediate need for the other person departing. But I guess one thing that we're working on in CIN is just a restructuring of the organization, I guess, but I'm not, it's just kind of new to us. The last meeting was just happening yesterday. So but anyway, so CIN has been operating under a sort of a different structure, not the proper nonprofit organization structure for the last number of years. And they're trying to realign that. So the chair of that, of CIN is working on that. And then once we settle that, and I think we have a proper nonprofit status, we'll be finalizing the courier situation and contracts in the beginning of the new year. So so I did a little about CIN. And also, again, I'm not sure if it's anything breaking news or anything, but part of that will be rebranding of the name. As far as I know, it's inland northwest libraries. But again, a lot of that is just hanging on to be structuring of the organization as far as nonprofit status goes. The branch report, so this doc, this little book that you guys, you get, it's part of the director's report. I guess you can call it a branch report. And basically, it's all the, all the data that I mentioned before, all the data from the branches coming in. And my communication person, you know, synthesized it, created the document. So it's still a work in progress. There aren't too much to say about it. It's kind of speaks for itself, but just a few things. So at the bottom, we talked about some of the positive things about the hours. And there are certainly positive things about the hours. We're not unaware of some of the other feedback we've been receiving about the hours. So there are some things, especially surrounding the three o'clock closure near your school and how it impacted schools, that's so important to us and we'll be looking at that. But other than that, the statistics, again, still a work in progress and we're hoping to be able to just create more value added you know, data for you there. And all that last, last page, just talked a little bit about what was happening. Just to give some example, we've discussed with the trunk and tree. Pinehurst have about four hundred people at their trunk or treat at level four hundred fifty-three. Rafterm gave out a thousand books. So I think you know, two to each person. So it's hope, you know, four, five hundred people at these events is very, very good for for events of this sort at these libraries. So that's just to give a sense. And again, I'm happy to hear whatever the trustees want in this one document. But it's, so we'll get, we'll get the branch reports, which should be quite extensive. And then just synthesize it for this, this book. So I'm open to hearing any feedback on how you'd like that to look. As we go forward, it will also be speaking, it should make it as best as we can. But anyway, we'll have feedback. And last of all, just so that we know, request for the locations and materials. I currently have eleven. I don't know why I have a lot of time here. I have three that I talked about last time. I currently have eleven. They should all be reviewed and done by the first week in December. I have, you know, ten days to review and then five days after the decision to respond. So I give myself fifteen days. Sometimes a little bit slower for me because it takes me time to get material. That should improve when I'm at post fall branch of my office there. And currently, there's eleven that I have on my document to review, but they all should be completed by the first or second week of December. And that is the end of my.
Sure.
Trusty boss?
I was just gonna ask the director if we should consider collecting some statistics or somehow or another find out market data or something, find out if we really need to add hours back instead of just ignoring it and going by some letters to the editor or something. Is there maybe some kind of form that can be at some of these libraries, Athol and Harrison and so forth? And you know, I don't know, how do we do it? Do we collect little surveys and people could say, is this adequate hours? Or I would just be curious if we're missing the vote because we're not listening.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, we definitely are listening and I'm already collecting data at this, at this branch supervisor level. They're bringing us that feedback. I mean, again, I wasn't here for all the development of that and the decisions. But you know, you treat this normally like in other situations where, you know, you, you reach out to the community, whether it's through a survey at the point of interest of the branch itself or some other level. And then we refer a part of that feedback and then we would, you know, make decisions based on that. So it would be part of something like a strategic plan process, which that's a very common question in the strategic plan, what do you think of our hours? That kind of thing. So that's very common. I would probably suggest that we don't wait for the strategic plan, even though it's just around the corner. The data gathering for the strategic plan will be in twenty twenty-five. We could wait, roll it into that, make a very specific and clear question in that kind of process where we collect data. But I think it warrants a little bit more of a specific approach where we're actually specifically asking that question to the community. So yeah, we're in the data, we are currently in the data gathering stage. And that would be something I would present at some point in the future.
Trusty Robinson? I just want to point out. We didn't cut library hours just because we thought it was a good idea or we thought people didn't come in after school. We did it because the board decided not to take a larger percent from the taxpayers. So to to jump out of the gate right after the decision was made to say, do you think people are unhappy with it? I think is kind of, I don't know, a little bit strange. I'm sure the people that used to come to the library on the days that it's closed now or the days after they get out of school are not happy with it. But I think it's a little early for us to start looking at that kind of data. Since it just happened and it happened because we didn't have money to pay for the employees. So does that make sense?
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'm when I say we're in the data gathering stage, I'm receiving data.
Oh, yeah. No, you're fine. You're fine. You just got here.
Yeah, no, I, I, we are receiving the data and we're compiling it. We're holding on to it. And again, when, when it actually turns into, you know, a presentation from me or something, it's still up in the air.
Yeah. That's your answer. I just wanted to remind the board, who was responsible for this decision, of why I think it's jumping again.
Trusty, any?
Just want to make a comment regarding the new November, the board report. I'm happy to watch it evolve before I start critiquing it. So I have no preconceived idea what it should look like. So I'm happy to watch it move along. And one other comment I had was, I really liked the, it was innovative, this part that came around to advertise the opening of Athol. That was kind of a clever. It looks like the old one goes in the back pocket of a book when you check a book out. So that was kind of neat. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions? And we will move on to the Apple library report and tour. So we will take the report first. Okay, easy.
And I have to turn on TV. Okay. So I'll try to keep my head out of the way. So hello, everyone. I'm Casey Peters. I'm supervisor here at the Apple library. So welcome to the new and perfect library. So Apple library origins stem from a woman named Lily McMarry back in nineteen sixty-seven. Actually, you know what? Let me do this first. There we go. So back in nineteen sixty-seven, she wrote a letter to the press asking for book donations from the community. Her actions led to the creation of the Open Book Club, which was the foundation for the Apple library. City Hall greatly contributed to this beginning by offering a room that they, especially for the Open Book Club. So through that, Lily McMarry laid the groundwork for the Apple library, which was officially founded in nineteen seventy-one. The Apple library continued to be housed at City Hall until this very building was finished in nineteen ninety-two. The first librarian at the Apple library was Susan Wagner, who served the city and then the district in Philadelphia in two thousand eight. Barbara Robin was her replacement and stayed here until her retirement in twenty fifteen. Jill Roche was the following librarian, and she retired in October twenty-three. And that is when I applied and was awarded this position. So here you can see Lily cutting the ribbon on the grand opening on October seventh, nineteen ninety-two. So twenty-five years after she wrote the initial letter to the press. I have to break the computer. Everybody will know. So a couple of days prior to the ceremony, members of the community created a book brigade and diligently helped move over eight thousand books from City Hall to the new building. The support from the community of Apple has always been strong. The library's confession. If we fast forward thirty-two years, here we are, in huge domestic, at the grand opening, our director, Paul Rivers and I, cutting the ribbon and then inside. And so that was last Tuesday the twelfth. We had an epic turnout, over two hundred people attending. We had music, sex, bass, gaming, and an extremely excited community. The library was definitely, as well was gone. While we tried our best to utilize book levels of optimum capability, we were still missing many services that our members rely on, like computers, printers, copiers, places to sit, storytimes, et cetera. So unlike the original opening of the Apple library, we did not have a human chain to help us move all the books, though many community members have gladly volunteered to. Instead, the movers rocked off the boxes and we began to unpack. It was intimidating at first, but as always, my team and I persevered. We were happy to do it, but there's so many boxes. So next, I'd like to talk a little about, about myself and my team. I started my library path forever ago. I was a branch manager at a small Italian airbase in Getty, Italy. From there, I moved to McCord Air Force Base in Washington State. I stayed there for about five years and enrolled in four of my masters of library science. But I foolishly listened to somebody else and decided to pursue my masters in international relations instead. So after that, I went chasing the wind for well over a decade and held a variety of non-library related positions. About three years ago, I found myself working at the Rafterm Library, where I decided to roll back to school and finally get my MOIS. And all of a sudden, three more classes. Yay. So so approximately three months before the flood, I applied and was accepted as the Apple branch manager. Parts of the transition have been amazing and others have been a struggle. I was still learning the ropes when the hype burst and the building flooded. I will say, however, that the experience has made myself and my team so much stronger. We are still here and grateful to be back in the building and all of us are ears to to start rebuilding relationships with our community members. So that brings me to my programming team. So we have Miss Bethany, our new services specialist. So we have Miss Bethany, our new services specialist. Um the kids and parents really miss her. Uh while she still helped programs, the locations and hours varied. It made her did made it difficult for her to connect with all the members we used to see regularly in the building. Um she still worked tirelessly throughout the closure. She traveled to various locations, all the round table kids and their supplies in her personal vehicle. She dedicatedly drove back and forth to Haiti to retrieve many supplies and use her temporary office there. And then Ally, we have, she is our adult programmer and sofa butterfly. She has background in public relations and marketing and she puts her skills to use. She always had the best local adventure like authors, crafters, doctors and business owners. She knows everyone in Bayview and that helps connect our two towns together. Um Ally also worked tirelessly during the closure. She held many programs at the community center. We were missing many of supplies, they were still locked away in the shed, but she was very creative, creative, and she was able to work around many of those obstacles. So now we have Garrick and Brienne. So Brienne over there is uh the face of our customer service. She's super friendly and great with the kids. And we have Garrick, um he's pretty quiet, but he is a very hard worker. He's also an excellent researcher. If you even remotely ask a question in passing, he's already find the answer before, he's always looking it up. So life on the bus. Life on the bus was trying at times, but we made it work. As you can see, it's not incredibly spacious in there and sometimes there'll be four of us in there all day long. It is really weird to have a desk again. So of course, our main goal is to always help our members as best we can, but we are lacking in many services that we normally offer in the building. We spent a good deal of time helping members in and out of the bus and doing the sort of a roadside pickup operation. The sayers did need something to be desired. Since we're not receiving receiving nearly as much traffic as before, we had to get created. So we participated in many community activities. For a farmer's market day, we would set up a pop-up tent at front, greet people and tell them about our services. We also participated in Apple Days, we had about four hundred peak, four hundred and fifty people show up to our booth that day. Chris from Haiti came down and helped and brought some library swag with him. Uh the electric company was there and they were giving bucket rides, so I decided to take my my lunch and go for a lift. It's a nice scary all view. And and then last month, we had a decent turnout for Harvest Bus over at the community center. And we participated in front or treated Super One and there was over four of the community members. It's hard to keep track of them all, so there could have been even more than that. And so there were lots of great costumes from the kids and we got to partner with other community resources like City Hall and the park. So twenty twenty four statistics. Bethany, I don't have a lot of accurate statistics, statistics to relay. Um because our services were at a minimum, there was many minutes once we were closed and there was confusion with the hours when we were open or not. So I'm unable to offer any accurate statistics as there is no way to know what our numbers would have been if we had been at full capacity. Um the most research, recent research I've done on communities does that the population is still growing, but not as rapidly as before. I think this is somewhat good news, this hopefully will not, we will not be upgrading the building as soon as I had originally anticipated. Uh so all that being said, twenty twenty five goals. Um so our twenty 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 five goals are to reestablish connections with our lost members, strengthen our relationships with our current members and create relationships with new members. Furthermore, we want to offer consistent programs and be creative with the resources we have. Many people have already asked where the three D printer will be located. Some reason the people have actual love with three D printer. So you have some before pictures and after pictures that I wanted to show you guys first because then when we walk through, you can kind of see what it looked like before, if you've never been here before. Um so so you can see that there used to be a lot of shelves coming out over there and then we added these ones over here. But hopefully you can still see that it's much better, it's open, so we are utilizing the space better. Um it's easier to navigate. Uh we were able to move the teen and young adult books to the side, so they're closer to the children's area, not around around the adult books. Um and so and by doing that, we are able to improve the layout. And as we unpack, we are also able to leave for the collection in order to curate a more balanced collection. So here we have the old Indian surface and Brienne and Garrick again, they wouldn't let me take any pictures, so I was. But it, um so the desk area looks better now. Um before the feel in here was a bit homeier, but we still have to hang up some art and get some signage, so. Um but it was kind of cluttered and outdated. Uh the old circulation desk was actually recycled from post fall and really did not fit the space. And it needed a trim bag, that's kind of awkward, the way it was laid out. And then, of course, there's just unnecessarily unnecessary shelving that was intruding and preventing a better flow. And so here, they've got the old ones on the side and so that's kind of going to the circulation desk and that goes out the window facing the highway. So you can see that we kind of rotated the shelves and we put more of our popular items over there, like hold the DVDs and rotating books and releases. So those are upfront. Um there's also computers under the window that weren't there before. And then overall, once again, just more open and more inviting. And then so this is the other side of the building facing the other window that faces the park. And so that's the whole, it's kind of blurry, haven't taken any pictures since, well, you know, before, and I didn't have many. So then that and then the hole needs to be over there by itself, check out. So there were only two computers under the window and now we have four and more seating and that's more open again there too. And then yes. Finally, before our tour, so um I'd like to thank everyone. Everyone involved in making the Apple Library whole again, um the board, contractors, admin facilities, IT friends, donors from the community. Um and everybody else, but all the people behind the scenes that helped. So I'd like to thank all of our members for being patient with us. Um we couldn't have done it without everybody's help. I also think that all the employees of CIN and CLN also deserve some kudos. I imagine that managers and staff elsewhere must have had to deal with inconveniences like our confusion with suppressed collections and holes getting lost. And I'm sure there was the occasional angry phone call from members that or that items got lost in the shuffle. Um I'd also like to say, thanks City Hall. Um for what, without them, we've been able to have a bathroom or refrigerator or microwave or replace the whole progress. Even let me store the plants there for the past eight months. They happily let us take lunch there if the space was available. Without their graciousness, we surely would have had a much more challenging time dealing with our book mobile situation. We also have a long history of working with City Hall and want to continue to foster that friendship. And then last but not least, of course, would be my fantastic team, who stuck it out for all those many long months. They bounced around to different libraries in the beginning and then they were complying to a tiny bus for the past seven months. Or in Bethany's case, having a mobile storytime in her personal vehicle. At times we were miserable, but so dispiring, we banded together, supported one another and became a much stronger team for it. Not to mention the impact, and everyone worked hard to get us ready in time. And it really was a lot of us. So I don't know, questions, comments? Anything? Ready for a tour?
Thank you, we we appreciate it. Yeah, we're ready for a tour and I think according to the agenda, we should be back in here in about seven minutes. But I don't want to, if you have more to show us than that, I'd like to see what there is. So it'll be seven-ish minutes that we'll be back in here uh for the next agenda. We are, we are resuming the meeting um after our tour. So if the audience can quiet down, please. All right, uh so we are now moving on to item number nine, discussion of library board of trustees vacancy and appointment. Idaho Code thirty three dash twenty seven sixteen. So as previously announced, the CLM board has a vacancy and we are appointing the new trustee today. Uh this person will be uh is appointed trustee until next spring's election. We'd like to thank all who considered the position, whether they sent in an application or not. Appreciate the community involvement. So if there's nothing else, nominations are now in order for filling the trustee vacancy.
Sure.
And trust class?
Um I would like to nominate Tony Ambrosetti. He uh turned in his sheet uh plenty early and I think he'd make a fine candidate.
Okay, thank you. Uh so we have Tony Ambrosetti, do we have any other nominations? Uh trust your own thing?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Lippert. I actually tried to nominate her last time, but there was a glitch in the message I sent. Uh she's obviously interested, she's obviously qualified, and I would like to give her a chance to show us why. She would like to be on board.
Okay, uh so we now have Tanny, Tony Ambrosetti and Michelle Lippert. Do we have any other nominations?
We we did, we did have another person that emailed in. Uh I think it came in a little late, but I don't know the person well enough. It was addressed to me, I had a phone call a few days ago and actually it was yesterday. And uh I don't I don't know the person enough, I didn't speak to the person, I don't have a phone number for them and I'm not certain they live in uh in the um library CLN district for certain. So I had a dead client making a nomination there. Just want to make sure it's known that somebody else applied.
Okay, all right, so if there are no, um Tracy Robinson?
Well, if we're talking about who applied, there were more than just those people mentioned. So I'm just saying, if you want to like talk about somebody that sent their stuff in a little bit late, which is fine. Um there were a few people that uh sent their stuff in and I appreciate it all, as we all do.
Yep, all right. Uh so if there are no further nominations, nominations are closed and our nominees are Ton- Tony Ambrosetti and Michelle Lippert. Uh so now nominees will have up to three minutes each to tell us uh why they'd like to be a CLN trustee. And so we'll listen to uh both of the nominees uh before we have questions and answers. Um see. Okay, so we'll we'll go in order and Tony Ambrosetti was nominated first. You you have a steal to give us or?
Not much more than what was on the sheet that I sent you, but I can go over a little bit of that. Trustees, staff. Good afternoon, I'm Tony Ambrosetti. I uh I've lived here in Cootney County for thirty two years. And uh I heard some comments earlier about how we need to diversify the board. So I'm about as diverse as one kingdom. I'm the grandson of four immigrants, legal immigrants. I uh I am uh the son of one of those who fought in the big war, World War Two. He was one of the greatest generation. He imbued in me a love for my country and actually was uh instrumental in my having chosen a career in the military. Spent thirty five years uh serving my country. Half of that on active duty, half of that as an instructor at the Survival School in Fairchild Air Force Base. I'm patriot, constitutionalist. Uh for those who express concern that uh everybody seems to be approved by the either the Democratic or Republican parties. I have not been approved by either of those, never been approved by either of them. Never run for office before. Been busy raising a family and imbuing that with a lot of books because books. Well, there's an old saying and it is optimus magister. And I'll translate this, optimus magister liber bonus test. The best book, the best teacher is a good book. Operative word is good, by the way. The best teacher is a good book. So that's actually a motto that uh uh used to be run in some grammar books that were all across the Catholic educational system back in the in the sixties from seminaceous, sorry. From Loyola University Press in Chicago. And it's true, it's it's really true because you don't know. When you send your kids out the door, what are they going to learn in school? What are they going to hear from their teachers? But when you take your children to libraries, which is an incredibly great experience, which my life of forty six years, my lovely wife there and I uh have done for years and years and years. The kids are all gone now, but we do that with grandkids when we can. And the best teacher is a a good book. So I love books.
All right, thank you, and now we will have Michelle Lippert.
Well, I can restate some of the things I stated earlier and I I will do that and I'll add a couple of other things. A, I'm an avid reader. I mean, if you had a chance to look at my uh curriculum VA, you would see that I've spent my entire career in education or being educated. At any one point in my life, I'm reading two books, a nonfiction, which I read during the day, and fiction, which I tend to read when I go to bed at night. Always been an avid reader, as a small child, my parents enrolled me in two book of the month clubs, which was awesome. I loved it, Nancy Drew forever. In terms of what I could bring to this board, twenty four years as an elected trustee in this county, served on the post fall school board. I mentioned before, I'm very well acquainted with Robert Rules of Orders, Idaho Code, open meeting laws. Last year, I was honored to be elected by the Idaho School Board Association as Board Chair of the Year, which was a huge honor. And yeah, I'm still smiling about that one. I spent twenty six years as a philosophy instructor at NIC and I've lived here for thirty six years. So between those two experiences, living here for thirty six years and working with students for twenty six years, I think I have a really strong sense of who our community is. And I'd like, I said it earlier tonight and I'll repeat that. This community is more diverse than I think this board has a tendency to believe. And I'm I'm not talking about diversity in terms of ethnic background. I'm talking about diversity in terms of religion or lack of religion. Um political beliefs. It is again, it's profoundly more diverse than I think the board has a tendency to believe. And I truly believe that one of the things that would be helpful to this board is if you adopted a more secular approach to governing. Something else you need to know, I have two kids, I have four grandkids. All three of my granddaughters were from dressed as Frozen for Halloween. And I think my grandson was like, what's what's the character from the Halloween movie, the Jason? He's twelve, he's twelve.
Jason Voorhees.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. No, I think that's Mike Myers.
Okay, uh thank you. Um let's see, so now we're going to open it up to questions. So do we have questions for either one of the candidates or both of the candidates? Uh Tracy Robinson?
Clearly, somebody has questions, right? Um I'm sorry, uh I'm sorry, what's your name? Tony. Um Ambrosetti, okay. Um so you've been, uh do you work at NIC or you you're at NIC for, are you on a board yet?
I've been a member of the NIC twenty four years.
And what what did you?
Italian language and Italian culture.
Okay.
Diverse.
Took you a long time to translate that, though, was that Italian?
I would say.
Okay. And have you been on a board before?
Uh no, can't say that I have. Um I have used Robert's Rules of Order here and there, but it's been so fraternity fuse. I was in a social fraternity at college many, many years ago. You can see. You can see, we're here, and every one of our meetings was brought in accordance with Robert's speaking. We're so familiar. And then also, yeah, really, in my day, we would actually learn Robert's Rules of Order when he got given idea in English class. And middle, middle, now, and then it's.
Actually, I might have learned a little bit about it, now that I think about it. Maybe.
Okay, so you both have time, because usually in the trustee manual, it says that it's 10 hours a month. It has been considerably more than that, but you, it's your third Thursday of the month. It's usually when we meet for three to three and a half hours, and then plus any special meetings. You guys will be available for that?
I'm retired.
That was my question about time availability, so.
Sure.
Tracy Glass?
For Michelle, I was wondering, you were a professor at NIC, and I see that you sound like you mainly did philosophy. So I had six children attend NIC, five of them graduated with their associate. I think they missed your classes. I don't remember. I pretty much knew all the teachers, but if my kids had been in your, any of them had been in your philosophy class, and they came there, you know, with the background that my wife and I got them to where it was pretty clear, black and white, right and wrong, morality, ethics. What would have your classes confronted them with, or how would have they been challenged? What kind of conversations would we heard at the dinner table after they came out of your class that, one of the, or any of those days? Can you kind of summarize what you did in those classes?
Well, depending on the class, of course. I mean, I'm thinking in terms of ethics, we present all points of view in ethics. We do not focus on any one singular point of view. In terms of what you might hear at the dinner table, the superintendent post-fall school, Jerry Keen, I had his daughter in one of my classes. And she came home and she was talking, and so I ran into Jerry, and Jerry said, well, she's decided she's a nihilist. And I'm not sure if everyone knows what a nihilist is, but a nihilist believes that there's nothing. No right, no wrong, nothing, right? And I just turned to Jerry and I said, Jerry, relax, they're all bad at that age. I mean, that's not an uncommon position for a young person to at least take on for a brief period of time. So I taught everything, all positions. My goal was always to not have the students know what my position was. So if I assign them an assignment like, you know, select deontology or utilitarianism as being the superior method of solving moral dilemmas, I did not want them to know which of those two theories I preferred. And that was always my standard in the classroom. I taught everything and tried to keep my own position as close to the chest as possible. Is that answer your question? I think you're muted.
Yes, that gave me a pretty good feel. Thank you.
Okay, so did you, well, one of you can answer, you do live in the CLN area?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any further questions?
I've got a question for Mr. Ambrosetti. Can you hear me? I guess you can.
Sure.
Can you tell me kind of a time or something in your background where you had to work with disagreeing group of people? And maybe try to find a way out of it or find a solution that was acceptable, either necessarily a compromise, but maybe how you helped a group that you were working with get out of a bind when they disagreed?
Well, I've been in several of those situations in different capacities, as a soccer referee, club soccer. There are a lot of disagreements that occur on the soccer pitch, and as the referee, you try to defuse them. But what I thought of when I started smiling about when you asked that was the fact that I was assigned to NATO. My wife and children and I lived overseas, so very multicultural, the diversity requirement. We lived overseas, traveled in many, many places. And one of the things that NATO has is a very interesting combination of countries, at least back then. It could be very combustible and to have, to have, to sit down with and to be able to broker a meeting with Turks and Greeks, for example, who have an innate dislike for each other. Yes, I would say that would probably qualify as the most, having Turkish and Greek officers. And then, interestingly enough, having them in our home for our Christmas party, which my wife hosted, and have them sit down at the same, at the same sofa and smile and have drinks together. So that's what I think of when I think of disagreements that I've tried to shoot over in the years and use.
Tracy Robinson?
Just a little follow up. Have you watched any of the, have you been to the meetings before?
I haven't. I've watched many of the meetings.
Okay. Do you think that you would ever disagree with this board and have to use that skill?
I suppose it's possible, sure. I think that my, my thinking on the main issues, especially in light of the most recent legislation that our elected representatives passed and signed by Governor Little this summer, or this past year, they went into effect on July 1st, the Action Child Protection Act at libraries and schools. I think that we're all on the same page on that one, so I don't think there'd be much disagreement on that. There may be disagreement about the last meeting I was at. Did I say I was at the last meeting? I was at the last meeting. And the last meeting where there was discussion of eight, nine versus 12. I had some ideas on that, but of course I was sitting in the audience, but, so there could be some disagreement, sure.
Okay, there are no further questions. We should discuss the two nominees, and I would like to keep it as positive, positive as possible. Anyone have a first moment? Tracy, any?
I was just going to say, I think both trustees are certainly have the academic, right nominees, yeah. I just say that. Have good academic and work experience and so forth, so they're probably both certainly qualified or positioned as a trustee, in my opinion.
Tracy Robinson?
I agree. Both candidates are very well qualified. I think it's important for any board, especially a government entity, to have, in fact, what it says, part of our role is to advocate for the library and the public that uses the library. So I, I think it's important this board gets a little, love this word, diversity of thought, though. That's why I nominated Michelle, and that's why I would vote to have her on this board, to represent the people that we hear come speaking to us. Every meeting, there's 50/50, and one side really is not represented.
So all applicants looked really good on paper, and the two that were nominated, nominated both seemed really qualified. But one stands out to me as one who dedicated to the Constitution, would make a good trustee, dedicated to books, and help with community healing, and I believe that is Tony Ambrosetti. Tracy Glass, you haven't spoken yet for this part. Do you have anything else to say?
I think I've got my questions answered. I have, I nominated Mr. Ambrosetti. I've known him for many years, the 34 years I've been in post falls. Certainly saw him in action as a teacher, and I've had nothing but highest respect for him. Michelle, I I definitely respect that she's been that many years on the school board and has the experience. But I feel they're both very good candidates, but I'm partial to Tony Ambrosetti.
Tracy, any?
Yeah, this based upon, I would say, certainly Michelle Lippert's shown up at many, many of the meetings in the past. Feeling of a philosophical overall difference with her interpretations of what we're doing or as far as where direction goes, and I expect I'm going to vote for the Mr. Ambrosetti.
There is no further discussion. We will move on to the voting. Well, actually, first, according to Robert's Rules of Order, voting is an order of nomination. Typically, you vote on the one person, and then if, once you get to someone who has a majority, you don't go any further on the list. Excuse me, but if you guys want to, we can. So anyway, so when we go through the voting, if there isn't a majority, then I would ask if anyone wants to voluntarily withdraw. We don't make anyone withdraw. And then we could vote again until we do get a majority or we run out of time. So we are moving on to the portion where, well, to the voting. So our first nominee is Tony Ambrosetti. If you would like to vote for Tanny, Tony Ambrosetti, sorry, that's a mouthful, then say aye.
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 Okay, so we do have a majority for Tony Ambrosetti. So we, like I said, we wouldn't typically go further than once we get a majority. That good with everybody? Okay, all right. So then Tony Ambrosetti has a majority, and he is our new appointed trustee until, until next year. All right, so for the swearing in, made a copy of the oath of office. If you want to pass that down to him. All right. See, so there's a part in there, when you start out, it says, I do solemnly swear, and then in parentheses, it says, or affirm as the case may be. That's to give you your choice. You can pick one phrase or the other, okay?
I think English phrase.
Not Latin or Italian. All right. So are you ready?
May I, may I use a Bible this long?
I don't believe statute or Robert's Rules says anything about that, so yeah, I think that would be fine. All right, so I don't remember.
Wait a minute, let me get another shot, because that would be awkward.
Okay.
I don't need that. I'll just repeat what you said.
Okay, all right. So I do solemnly swear or affirm as the case may be.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of library trustee.
The duties of library trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Right. Thank you. It's your good speaker in the United States. Right, thank you. So yes, welcome to the board, and now we will immediately go on a 10-minute break. So we will come back at 3:44. Okay, it's 3:46, and this meeting is called back to order. All right, so our next item is the policy packet discussion. And we were on children in the library policy, section 2C, when we left off last time. Wait, oh. I had, I had crossed that off of my list, because the attorney was not able to be here today, because he didn't want to get everyone else sick, which.
Oh, thank you.
Anyway, so he said that we could double up on our trustee training maybe at our next meeting. All right, so now the next section is number 13, policy packet discussion. All right, so we were discussing section 2C. Not sure if it was the very last thing we were talking about that, but it was brought up in that part. It says, within the collections created for adults only. I was thinking, it sounded like from our last meeting, that a majority of the trustees wanted there to be a separate adult access only area of the general collection and separate from the children's and the minor sections. So potentially, I was thinking that that means, say, within the adult access only area, rather than within the collections created for adults only, for director?
Well, my only concern is that this is actually the fundamental question that needs to be resolved. Like, I mean, we can take the policy by, like, the worst method, but everything changes on the decision we make regarding if we're going rooms, going the adult collection itself being the adult collection. So I, it's, I don't know, I'm not sure. To me, it's a little bit challenging, because the worst thing isn't the issue. The issue is actually making that crucial decision of whether or not we're going to choose the path of rooms, combination of rooms and cabinets, whatever, or go the route that I'm kind of proposing the directive and, and the route that these policies were actually constructed for, which doesn't segregate the adult collection. So I just, before we get into the discussion, I just want to make sure I've made it really, really clear, right? And again, I wasn't here for all the stuff that led up to this over the last few years, but I want to make sure that any decisions that we make about the adult collection are made knowing full well that 100% this isn't about the children's collection. The children's collection will be 100% safe, totally law-abiding, zero to 17, no question whatsoever. So the decision we're making is more about the adult collection only. I hate to use that word, because I still was throwing around in the context of legislation, but so I know there's probably a lot of trauma, betrayal, and all that kind of stuff, those hurt feelings, and rightfully so. Because parents from like 1900 to 1999, you know, or whatever, knew or felt that the children's section of the library was safe. And then over the last couple of years, you know, they found out that, they were shocked that things were in the children's section, which were unsafe, and then that all leads to, you know, the legislation, everything. But pretty sure that any parent between 1900 and 1970, you had an example of 100 years, a century. Anyone in the 20th century, they didn't think that the adult section was safe, right? They knew in 1925 or whatever, that, you know, hey, kids, if you go to, don't, don't take the D.A. Lawrence book off the shelf, or don't go there, like. They knew in nineteen twenty-five or whatever that, you know, hey, kids, if you go to, don't, don't take the D H Lawrence book off the shelf or don't go there. Like it was the parent's responsibility to, to raise their children. And I don't think the expectation was that the adult section was safe. It would never have been considered safe. And I don't know, I, I'm, I'm talking from the perspective of, uh, you know, telling my child, you know, you know, you probably shouldn't read the children of hearing yet. Yeah, you can read Lord of the Rings, but you probably shouldn't read that yet. Your older brother said, no, I mean, I never read it, but, but I'd ask one of my older sons, say, can, can the younger boy read this yet? And then they said, no, I shouldn't read that yet. So parents were always making these decisions. And I think there's a definite sort of feeling of like, whether it's upsetness or anger or betrayal about what has transpired in the children's section over the last decade or so. Which is fine. That's fair. I just don't want that to be a part of the discussion we're going to have about the adult section. Because the children's section isn't a part of this, I guess, I'm assuming you, you trust me in this regard and it's going to be one hundred percent law abiding. Right? And so, and so therefore now we're really shifting and we're saying we're talking about the adult collection and do we want to make the adult collection, which will be kind of, honestly, would be kind of unprecedented in the sense that we would never have separated out things of the adult collection in order to make the entire collection safe. Quote unquote, safe, you know, for, 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 for my, I wouldn't even do the expectation. I, I can't imagine a parent thinking that it was safe in the twentieth century. They would have just automatically known that, you know, there's going to be things in there, kids, you know, okay, kids, don't, you know, don't do this, don't do that. That's their job. That's their responsibility. So I was really trying to craft policies that speak to this question of the adult collection. Because in my mind, as the director here now, the other question of the children's section, that's already done. It's a done deal. If, if we're going to be law abiding, we're going to, uh, whether I need to get more and more requests. The only reason I would need more and more requests for relocation of material would be because they're just beating me to the punch. If they don't get it to me, that way they have me in the parents or whatever. If I'm not getting those, it just means that I'm getting to that particular material ahead of them sending me that request. So I can't guarantee the timeline. I know that's been asked of me before, but, but let's, as we move forward and I'll stop here, but let's talk about this in light of just the adult collection. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about the children's section anymore. We do need to deal with what it means in the law as far as providing material that's harmful to minors. How does that play into what's in the adult collection? So that's all I'm trying to say. I don't want to, I don't want it to be influenced by our bad feelings or ill feelings about what has transpired over the last ten, fifteen years where people were all of a sudden shocked about what was in there and rightfully so. And it's too much of a discussion as to talk about complexity, the why and how that all transpired. But bottom line is if we go back, you know, and say, okay, children's section is fine, adult section is what it has always been. How do we apply this law to that aspect of it? So, I just wanted to say that because I, I just don't want us to go through this policy. Uh, these policies always in the back of our mind thinking, oh, it's horrible to have all this stuff. It's horrible. We've got to protect children. It's horrible. And a hundred percent we're going to protect the children in the children's section. Absolutely. I just don't want to apply a heavy hand to the adult section when it may not be necessary and not necessarily called for, uh, even within the legislation. Uh, and I'm trying to find a way to behave or act as normally as possible. And for a hundred years, that's kind of how we did things. And that's what my director was all about. This is normal library behavior, right? From, from the staff perspective, from the director's perspective, this is how we operate. So so yeah, that's just a little preamble. But I, I don't think we can go much further without actually deciding do we want to go the room, the route of designated rooms? Because all these policies were not written that way. They're written in order to create a structure where who's responsible for this minor who entered the building, right? The implicit or explicit authority being given to that authorization being given to that minor as they maneuver their way to the building, right? If we go the room route, then yeah, it's, I guess the easy way through, I guess, because you just segregate everything. But it really, like I said in my original directive with the quibono paragraph, the only people who benefit from that route is a very small group. It's the group of some, not all parents, but some parents with children ages thirteen or ten or to seventeen who prefer that. That's the only group we're, we're sort of satisfying by going that route. Whereas if we try to try our best to go the sort of more traditional library route, we're hopefully serving everybody or at least trying to achieve that. So that's why, again, I don't know how else we can accomplish it other than really striving right for that big question. Do we want to pursue adult access only rooms? Or do we want to try at least to resemble what libraries had been for a hundred years at least? If not even more into the twenty-first century for a little bit, but, uh, so.
Chair?
Uh, Tracy Buss?
So I, I guess, uh, I'm ready to make a motion to answer that question or that we can answer the question, but the clarification that needs to be understood is are, I, I think we have to allow under eighteen, seventeen year olds to be able to go into the adult area. I think we've already come to that from last summer where we tried to change the minor card policy to limit them. If we if there's some way to control where those minors go in the adult section, then, then the question is different than what the director's saying. But if, if they're going to go into the adult, be able to go in the adult section and the Idaho law says those books from the children's section have to be moved to an old adult access only area, we have to have an adult access only area. We're, we're not meeting the letter of the law and we're just saying we're, we're going to approximate it. So I believe there are too many dangerous books. Not, we're not just talking about the Dewey Decimal Systems that call out, you know, artwork that is bad. There are too many new books that have been written that maybe don't even get classified correctly, but they're just little landmines sitting there waiting for the child to find. And I, I see no other way except to move them to an adult only access area. So unless somewhat, I guess we can have a discussion, but I, I would move that we I would move that we, uh, create an adult access only area, not necessarily a room, but let's just say an adult access only area. We can answer that later, but I, I would make the motion that the board is create, wishes to create an adult access only area. And then we can have a discussion.
And so I would rather wait for a motion until later and you said I would move. So does that mean that that's what you want to do in the future or that's what you're doing now? Because I think it might be better.
I, I would like to move now, move now. Make the motion now and let's discuss the motion. That's the motion on the table. That's the topic the director wants answered. The motion is to create an adult access only area.
Okay, it has been that we, uh, create an adult access only area. Further discussions, uh, Director?
Uh, so in, in, in the, in the legislation, it says, uh, a couple of times where that comes up, uh, relocation of such material to a section designated for adults only, and then a little bit further down to an area with adult access only. To me, that isn't even the question. So the way the motion is saying, do we want, do we want an area that's designated for adult access only? And the whole idea of the policy packet was that the entire building is that already. Uh, so, and if we have a sign that says adult collection beyond this point, you know, here's our conduct policy, whatever it says, we've already taken that reasonable step. We've already designated it as an adult access only. So even if the motion was to be moved and, and passed, all we've agreed upon is something which we've already agreed upon. I'm actually saying is it going to be a room? Because this is what, this is what's really going to affect us as the library staff practically. Do we have to find rooms in all branches? Uh, I've already said this in my, in my directive where a room in, in Post Falls is, is easy, a room in Aden's probably easy. Uh, you know, the other one's very, very challenging. But this is where, this is, because if you notice the, the policy packet is about how a library staff person is going to engage. These are the rules of conduct. So it's built upon the premise that the adult collection is curated for adults only. It is designated for adults only. And if a minor was to go in there, the policy talks about that. Uh, if we decide to have a room, the pol, the, this policy packet becomes irrelevant because we wouldn't need to construct any sort of structure in order to accommodate that. The, it would basically be a room and, and it would, it would relieve not necessarily in a positive sense, it would relieve the staff of their responsibility, the responsibilities in this document. It would also relieve the parents of their responsibilities, which are built into this document. So it's, it's not just a question of, I'm not disputing at all the, the law. The law is very clear. It, it should be put into an area that's designated for adults only. And I always kind of had a little bit of difficulty with, uh, maybe it's because I, you know, I'm more of a language arts type of guy, but I had a difficulty with switching this language into a quotation marks with three capital letters, adult access only. That becomes a room, an entity, but that's actually not saying that here. It's just saying to a section designated for adults only, to an area with adult access only, which is essentially the adult collection of the library. And then the question is what reasonable steps do you take to ensure that minors don't go in there or don't have access to the harmful stuff in there? And that's kind of what this policy packet was built upon. I'm going to assume that, uh, we don't go, I was assuming we don't go with the room route. We go with a more traditional library route. Children's section is totally safe. Everybody knows it, no fear. But the adult collection is not safe for minors. It never has been. And parents are the ones who are responsible for authorizing their access to that implicitly by the fact that they're unattended over the age of nine or twelve, whatever we decide. So they're in the building. Staff person sees that, they automatically is, well, you're in the building. I deem that you're over nine or twelve and therefore, uh, I'm not going to, not going to get involved. But let's say Johnny, just to illustrate, let's say Johnny walks past the threshold where it says adult collection, you know, here. Uh, and Johnny goes over to the books about dogs. The library staff sees that, you know, they know they have implicit authorization to be there because that's how in local print is going to work, right? And they just watch. Maybe they go up to Johnny, if he's not in any place specific, hey Johnny, can I, can I help you? Johnny says, I'm looking for books on, on dogs. I say, yeah, yeah, just over here. Because, because even though you're under seventeen, I know you have implicit authorization to be here. If you were to take a book out of dogs, come up to desk with a card, now I know you have explicit authorization to be here because that was in the process of sign, a parent signing off on the card. So that's all good. A child, and this is what we got to, I think, at the last meeting. The real challenging part comes down to when Johnny crosses the threshold and goes into the fiction section or a section where the staff knows. And the staff person goes over there and says, hey Johnny, can I, can I help you with something? And Johnny says, uh, yeah, my friends told me that there's, there's this super great vampire trilogy, you know, that, that I'm supposed to, that they want me to. So this is where the staff person might say something, well, you know, Johnny, uh, you're in the adult section now. Did you see the sign there? Have you read our policies? You know, you, you're not allowed to access things that are harmful to you. There's going to be harmful things in it. This is going to be a transaction that just becomes the norm. Right? And we might say, the staff might say something, oh, you know, there's a really good chance that, you know, that this particular genre you're interested in, it has harmful materials. If, if, you know, you can't, you, you can't, and this is where you go back to the conduct. You can't access that without your parent being here. Right? Now Johnny, like, like in old times, could say, okay, yeah, thanks. And then go around and sneak back and get the book and go into the corner of the room and read it. And he's in violation of the conduct. And then that would kick in. And this is why last time two C, we all, we talked a little bit about should it be will or should it be made? Restricted, but it's going to kick over to the rules of conduct and Johnny knows that. His parents know that. So to me, this is how I see it playing out because that's how it has played out. I'm not saying it's the only way. I'm just saying I want to make sure we make a decision based on the awareness that for hundreds of years, or at least a hundred years, this is how it played out. And it doesn't have to resolve in rooms and cabinets to be effective. These policies were built on the concept that we can behave and operate normally without going that other route. So just, just to comment on the motion, when, I'm not really concerned about whether we're trying to motion that there should be in each CLN branch, a location that is designated for adults only or to an area with adult access only. That's already a given, even here in Apple. We just had the tour. The reason why we moved all the young adult books over on this wall. So now it's really, really easy. You throw a little sign in the middle. Battle collection beyond this point and, and the visual of the building and the way we've structured, and this goes back to my directive. One of the problems was layout. With this structure, it's very easy now for staff to be able to see, hey, this person that I'm deeming with my own intellect as I perceive them to be under the age of, uh, well, obviously not under the age of nine or thirteen, depending what we decide because they have to be attended. It's basically that small group, oh, that kid looks maybe thirteen, fifteen, maybe they're seventeen, and they've gone over there. Oh, but you know what? They went over there, which I know is all cookbooks. So I know it's, so this is where the third prong was staff responsibility. So the three prongs together were meant simply to say, well, first of all, clearing out the children's sessions, so it's law abiding. Plus these three prongs of the directive were just meant to put us back to the future. I can use that. Then we'll go back to the future, basically, the way it used to be. You know, when the children's section was safe and every single parent, lawmaker, teacher, child knew that the adult section wasn't safe. They always knew that. They always knew that there's going to be stuff in there a parent, a kid shouldn't read. So I don't know where the sweet spot is. And I want to follow this law a hundred percent. It's fine. But I just want to make sure that we don't jump to something as sort of restrictive as a room and cabinet. Well, not saying no, because in my directive, I already gave that option and I, I'm here to support the trustee. So, uh, but again, I know I talked a lot, so I will stop there.
Uh, trustee Anning?
Yeah, I, I think I said it probably two or three days meetings. I'm not a fan creating a separate room, lockers or any other physical controls or segregation. I guess, let's go back and see, um, in these here. If I feel comfortable that the staff or their job is going to be to monitoring where the minors go when they're in the adult area. Like, if I, if, if I get a comfortable understanding as we go back into these, um, policies here, that there's going to be some kind of, um, monitoring of what goes on out there. I don't want to call policing of it, but monitoring where the, where the minors are in the adult collection. Um, I would feel somewhat comfortable. I, I prefer a traditional way of managing the library. Um, but we're, and I don't know what's in these, I have to go back and refresh myself now on these policies. Where I would draw the line is I think minors should only be able to check out books that are in the minors area that are designated as minors. And regardless of what a parent thinks, that only books that need checked out, that are in the adult collection should be checked out by adults only. And if the adult has to come in and check a book out for a, a minor, well, so be it. So I, I, I don't fully understand again, the monitoring process by staff more or less of minors in the adult area. And I want to make sure when we get to the card policy, I think it should be hardened past. I don't think that we can knowingly say a, a minor, because a parent says so, because they sign a paper, can check out any book in the entire adult collection. I think that that's, that part, I think, is a little bit reckless. Best I can summarize my thoughts.
Tracy Robinson? So I believe it was our last, um, meeting or regular meeting, I'm not sure which one, but the, um, the attorney said that we can't go the route of not letting a parent pick an all access card for their child because we could be in trouble for that as well. because we could be in trouble for that as well. He was talking about there's this side we have to be careful of and there's this side that we have to be careful of. One is, I think he was talking about the state law and one is like, um, federal law of of parents' right to let their children have access to what they want them to have access to, of course, there's restrictions on that. Um, the kids with the all access would still not be able to, um, get a book out of the adult section if it had been challenged and and or if the librarians knew that it was, um, I don't know, uh, something in that book, I'll use Fifty Shades of Grey, okay? I think that's the kind of book that, um, the librarians would know, um, if a sixteen year old with an all access card was getting that one off the shelf, they would go in and step in. That's the type of book I believe that the director's talking about or the type of system. Also, I'd like to, uh, ask the director, um, these policies that that you're talking about and, um, that I think sound like they would, and I know it's not just about keeping us safe from being sued, I know it's about protecting children. But these policies that have been put together to do that, to do both, have they been, um, lack of better terms, approved by our attorney? Does, does our attorney think that this would work for us? Thank you.
Yeah, so he, he, he has them, he's had them since before the special meeting. We haven't had the chance to, well, we talked about it ahead of time before I drafted them. So it was that conversation, I drafted them, um, he's seen them, but we haven't had a follow up about it. So I don't know, um, and part of the discussion even with, it was just the idea that anything that does get approved goes to the attorney for for that process. I was trying to do it ahead of time because for me, a lot of it actually comes, for me, a lot of it does come down to, because the protection of the children i- is is not, it is a no brainer for me, that that's a given, um, across the board. But so even in that example where Johnny sneaks around to get the book, which he knows is bad, uh, to me, the question to the attorney is, well, who who's breaking the law there? We didn't provide it to him, he took it, even though he knows the policy, whether he knows the policy because we actually had an interaction with him in the, in the stacks or whether he just bypassed the sign or whatever. Who who's actually breaking the law there? I don't know the answer, I'm just rhetorical question, who's actually breaking the law? Is it the parent who let the child go there? Or is it the child who did that? Or are we the ones breaking the law by having it there? So to me, that's one of the questions. But I, and and again, i- it's, short, short answer is that, uh, I don't have official a stamp approval from from legal. He has it, he's had it for a while, we haven't had a chance to have a follow up.
Thanks. Trustee Empressini.
Beginning at the last meeting, can you hear me? Beginning at the last meeting.
Do you light on?
And, uh, over the last, uh, few weeks, I've been thinking about this. I'm not sure I have ever been to another library in any other part of the country. I've been all over and lived all over the country and overseas as well, the military libraries. I just don't remember the libraries being divided into children's and adults. It was usually children's and general, general stacks or general, um, area section. When we, when we talk about in my mind, uh, adult, we're talking nowadays, this is the problem with the way that the language has developed, we're talking about, um, I think we may be talking about books that are for, uh, in initially intended for adults. But I can tell you that when my wife and I took children to the library and we always accompanied our children to the library, um, there was no problem with them going into the general area. They weren't zeroing in on D H Lawrence or, um, or any other, uh, books of that nature. So I'm wondering if maybe we can't, first of all, clarify the nomenclature, as we used to say in the military, the terminology. And and maybe we can agree, because I don't know if it's actually a, um, a library, nationwide library, uh, initiative to have the area that's not children called adults. It sounds like it's kind of a default, but it's really the general area. And when we talk about the adult area, that will make it easier for us to say an area that would require more mature, over eighteen. And frankly, I I don't understand where we're getting this idea, by the way, that if a parent takes a child into an area that does have, um, third, uh, uh, that does have questionable, uh, actually, it's not questionable, it's pretty clear in the law. Any of the things listed in here, it doesn't say anything that I can find about it's okay to make it available to them if their parents are with them. That's another issue, I haven't seen that in here at all, I'm reading over the law over and over again. So, uh, my comments are partial questions for Director Walters, but also for the other trustees, that the others, uh, for my colleagues to say, can't we give it a better terminology? Is it going to disrupt something to call it the general area instead of the adult area?
Yeah, I think, uh, general section works in my brain better, but it's, you know, you kind of have to go with library terminology, um, as well. Uh, trustee Anna.
I was just going to say, my preference, and and I I got the impression it wasn't legal before, but I would prefer there be a minor section, a general collection and an adult section. Even if it's not walled off or with signage and this area is adult stuff and those genres are not locked up, they're not they're not piecemeal taken apart in a different room, they're just, these are adult books, some are probably pretty fine. But, uh, as an example, we'll say adult fiction. I just think that that should just be, that should be the adult collection, it could be a sign hanging off the ceiling or on the end of the stacks and says adults. Or the rest of the library is be general because most of this stuff is safe. So I I would like to have three, three tiers, if you want to call it minors, general collection and adult. Adult, not adult access only, but just adult collection. And then if a minor is in the adult collection, minors in there, but then they can, I guess, someone's going on and verify they belong over there. In my mind, that would be the ideal outcome. I really don't see us having staff opening and going through or looking at reviews of every single book in the library and segregating those that have much more material that are, or for the minors, have to put them in another separate area by itself. So that's, that's my picture of the ideal outcome, is is three different areas.
Sure. Um, I think, uh, trustee thoughts?
Um, so just to clarify, I I agree, I like a general area if it can be done. My goal is to satisfy the families, the parents who want to let their children go through the different areas they need, whether it's cookbooks, atlases, uh, history and not be worried that they're going to find a landmine that's going to take their innocence away or something. We should make an area that they can go into as they're in their later teens and do this. But I I I listened to the director giving the example of watching Johnny go from one area from dogs to another and that the librarian's going to be keeping an eye on him. I I could see that when when I grew up and I was in our little library and Mrs. Roth was sitting there at the desk and she was looking over her glasses at me and she saw everything I was doing while I'm waiting for my parents to come pick me up, but I I don't see that at CLM. I don't see how you're keeping track of it and I don't see how a child, well, well, the biggest problem I see is I I I haven't heard any concept or evidence from the director of how we're going to put these books in one place so that you know that when Johnny goes over to this, approaches this place or this zone, that he's in a red zone. I get the impression that we're going to try to follow the old, the Dewey Decimal System and you're going to have a nonfiction book that isn't in the adult fiction, it's nonfiction and it's going to have, uh, you know, whether it's medical or some kind of instructional thing that somebody wrote and we own it at the CLN. It's, it's going to be nonfiction, it's going to be over here in three aisles over in the adult section. You're going to have some kind of rotten, modern thing that somebody wrote that thinks it's fiction. It's not, it it's, it's not, uh, some of these books from the eighteen hundreds, I don't even know if we even have those so much, some modern fiction thing about a girl getting raped or about, you know, all this happening, but it's not in the children's section. But I just, it seems like it's going to be, they're all going to be in different places. And if the director can convince me that, no, they're all this nonfiction and these old books from the eighteen hundreds that have been a problem and this modern thing, they're all going to be in one section of the shelf and we're going to put a, uh, you know, a radiation sign up above it and the child's going to know darn well, maybe we're going to put lines on the floor, tape on the floor or something. Everyone's going to know when you cross into that area, you're in this danger zone. Then then I'll buy your suggestion about keeping it adult only. But you're going to have to put them all in one area that the librarian can, can see and know when Johnny's going into it and Johnny's going to have to know that he's going there. And it can't be this random thing where he he has no idea that he just went by this, this, uh, nonfiction instruction book that he shouldn't have done. So we we can't put the problem on the child and we the parent has to be, have confidence in CLN that when they look, give them this card, that CLN has protected their family from Johnny losing his innocence because the librarian didn't happen to notice it. It can't depend on the librarian unless it's in one, one zone and I, and it seems to me like it has to be, uh, I don't, I don't, maybe there's a motion detector and a light goes off or something. I I can think of technology things to make it really clear when a child goes in there that shouldn't be going. So those are my thoughts, give, convince me that you can do that and I'll go for your adult area.
Fair enough.
Uh, well, again, I'm not sure I can convince you in the, in the time I've got here, but, um, uh, but really, so fundamentally, from a practical librarian standpoint, no matter which method you choose, the, the thing that the li- the library, librarian has to do, the basically technical services, we need to be able to designate what is and what isn't harmful to minors in the adult collection. Like, you can't move anything to an area and you can't move anything to a room unless you know what it is. So no matter what, we have to know what it is. So if we're going to make arguments about librarians could never know everything or they couldn't know what's there, well, we're going to have to know because we have to move it. So no matter what, the practical process, no matter what decisions made, is is the technical services department and and my IT guy and me and collection development, we have to say, okay, well, we have to designate what is and what isn't harmful to minors in the adult collection. So no matter what, that has to happen. And that actually is one of the harder parts. So, um, once that does happen though, you then have the capability, for example, at the circulation desk, right? Uh, if, if, if Johnny was trying to check out Fifty Shades of, that's an obvious example. But if you're trying to check out something which was designated as harmful to minors in the adult collection, certainly when the capability is within the capabilities of tech to have it pop up on the screen because it has to be somewhere in the cataloging record, right? And we have to be either way because in order to move it, we have to know it. So no matter what, we have to be able to designate what is harmful to minors in the adult collection. Once we have designated that, then our decision is, okay, well, do we put a spine label on it like we do with westerns and inspirational fiction? Like librarians have always done things on the side of the spine to help whatever designate. So what do we do with that capability, right? We've added the designation, designator, let's say in the mark record of the catalog of that item. So that gives us potential, right? It gives us potential for having it pop up at the desk. So because we, the bottom line of the legislation is we are not supposed to provide access to harmful material. That's really the goal here, we're not supposed to provide access to harmful material, right? We're going to have harmful material to minors in a, in a, in a public library. We've always had things that are harmful to minors in public libraries. And I'm not, I'm not really hung up on general or adult as the term, I'm not even sure if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, uh, nationwide or professional wide term. Like, that doesn't really matter to me, whether it's called general or adult. And I did make it clear at the last meeting that if you went to an adult bookstore, the adult section of a library, you're not going to find much overlap, right? Professional librarians, if they're professional librarians, are better at discerning and understanding how to build good collections. Again, I know I'm redundant and I say these things that are written in all my directive, but basically there isn't going to be a lot of overlap between adult bookstore and the adult collection of a library. I'm not using the term adult in any way remotely like that. So whether we call it general or adult, to me, wasn't a big issue because of their synonymous. This section is curated for adults, but no one can enter the building, right? Unless they have permission to enter the building, if they're under certain age, they're accompanied, if they're older, but under seventeen, there's an implied, we're not in local print, so the whole building is adult access only, right? Because you can't actually get in there unless you have permission to be in there if you're a minor. And the permission, I think the lawyer was not injuring my last conversation about this, is that it's implied that the, that we don't act in local print and therefore, the minor between the ages of thirteen, or let's say ten, seventeen, has been authorized to be in there. So that's all said and done, our biggest goal here is to make sure we don't provide, from the legal standpoint, we don't provide access to material that's harmful to minors, which means no matter what, once this is all decided, you know, we can get back to work at at CLM doing stuff, is the first step is to be able to designate, everything that's bad in children's session has been moved, it's not there anymore, done. But now we have a bunch of stuff in, in the adult section, which was deemed harmful to minors. So how do we designate that? We'd have to go and look at the entire collection, which I know came up before, like, how's the librarian going to do this? And I mean, I think, but but actually, no, that is exactly what we'll have to do no matter what. We cannot move things to a room or to a shelf unless we know what it is, which means that process of knowing what it is could provide us with the potential to flag the items record, preventing checkout, which means we wouldn't provide it. Johnny could come up with a book which is harmful to minors, he has the card, which is authorized by his parents. But when he swipes it, then we get to step in and our conduct policies and the law and say, sorry, even though your parents have authorized you with this card, we are not allowed to provide, so the law binds us, we're not allowed to provide you this. Right? So that doesn't, that's not going to convince the argument about the the ebb and flow of of a, of a, of a minor moving freely to the library. Obviously, that's not going to solve that. But the ability to designate what is harmful to minors gives us the option of how we solve that. So either it's something on the book itself, right? Or like my example with the vampire trilogies, like, we do know, and if someone says, well, how could you possibly know everything? That argument's not going to hold, we can't make the argument, how po- how could you possibly know everything? Because we need to know everything in order to move it to a room or a cabinet. Like, so no matter what, we have to know, otherwise we can't move forward. So if we can take that as a given, I'm just saying that, okay, once we've all agreed that, yes, the library will have to know and will have to add to their individual records, the fact that it is harmful or it isn't harmful to minors, what do we do with that new power that we have within the database of the, of the ILS, of the, the integrated library system? You know, now that we have that power, do we have to move it all, do we segregate? Right? Does identification automatically mean segregation? Or can we take identification and turn that into robust policies that protect us at the checkout desk? And robust policy that help us with how we navigate, and I, 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 no, I mean, uh, the idea that what happened, I can't Uh, the idea that what happened, I can't remember the name of the library you referred to, but. The libraries that we all had when we were kids, I'm not sure why we can't do, I mean, I don't know if it was possible for them. I'm not sure why it isn't possible for us. And I actually getting at that in my directive, that is the librarian's responsibility, that's why I said in the directive. We are responsible for our materials, but we're not responsible for the patrons. We're not acting in local print, so there has to be some responsibility on the part of the parents. And that's what these policies are about, who's responsible for what? The parents are responsible for their children. We're responsible for our materials, we should know where it is, we should know what it is, and we're responsible for it, just like I said before. If if Johnny's got a book, a nice dog book, and he's pouring, you know, coffee or water on it. We don't care about going to reprimand Johnny. It's not our job, not as parents, we're not gonna go and say Johnny, that's terrible, stop that, we're gonna go and protect our book. Because we're in charge of the materials, we're not in charge of people. The parents are responsible for Johnny, we're responsible for our collection, so I do think that it is possible. Because the the very first point, starting point is being able to designate what is harmful to minors in the adult collection. And if we can do that, then we have options. One option is to segregate onto a shelf into a room, another option is, the one I'm presenting here, I guess, is robust. Conduct policy, right, uh, children in the library policy, card policy that protects us. Right, while also giving over to the parents their freedom and rights.
Doctor Stanley?
Yep, and one small thing that needs to be kept in mind is there is such thing as self-checkout, so. Um, if a minor has a minor card, maybe that would require to self-checkout, maybe it doesn't work for the minor card, I don't know, but. We make sure it's kept kept in mind in the process there.
So I understand that there's pros and cons to to either direction that we take, um. And I understand that there's gonna be inappropriate books or books that I don't like in the adult or general section. But, so I'm not saying that these are on the same magnitude, uh, but an example that. Could make things really clear is that um. We have chainsaws, chainsaws or guns in the library of things, we would just leave them on a shelf in the. Adult or general section, uh, and just expect that the kids are supposed to. Release themselves and not go over there because, you know, those are potentially dangerous weapons and it would be the parent. Who decided, you know, I think my kid needs. Needs this item and the parent would know, you know, when or if. The child would be ready for that, they would instruct the child, they would, if the child was using it dangerously, they would. Would have stopped at that, say, no, we're taking it back, um. So I don't think that things should just be, you know, on the shelf for kids should ac- can access them, um. Anyway, so I. And like I said, I I know that there's gonna be inappropriate books in the adult or general section, but things that are obscene, uh, I haven't, there's. I believe not a constitutional right to obscenity, um. And if an adult wants to go check something out, they shouldn't have to be. Exposed to something that's pornographic, you know, they just didn't know, they pick a book up and it has. Great title, so they take it home and it's got pornographic material in it or um, it's totally obscene. Uh, I don't think that people should have to be exposed to that now if they want it and. The library has it and it's in a separate section, then, you know, they go get it. But, uh, it just doesn't seem like we should be leaving these landmines, chainsaws and guns on the shelf. Anyway. Uh, Director?
Uh, I mean, I I appreciate the illustration, um, I mean, uh, it just brings to mind the, some like the like the idea of the DVDs. Because the chainsaw and the gun, like they require a certain, you can't just stumble across using it. You can't, you'd have to actually engage with it, right, so, uh, like in the DVDs, like. It's not super often that the DVD covers or whatever, even of an R-rated movie, you know, let's say it was like Godfather or something, right? There's nothing on the cover. The person have to do, they don't take it out, open it up, stick it in DVD player, so that bit moves way into the realm of the the parent has already let the child. Check it out, they checked it out with them, and then once it leaves the building, that's all on the parents, so. I'm not sure if. Oh, so there's that, I'm not sure that we're just. Just willy-nilly leaving things on the shelf, I'm not sure that's really what's happening. Um, but I wanna go back to the idea that if you walk into an adult bookstore. And you walk into the general or adult collection, there there shouldn't be and isn't going to be a lot of overlap. We're not specifically going to collect. The stuff that you would go buy in an adult bookstore, I mean, that would be poor collection development on the part of librarians, so. I'm not really sure whether we're gonna run into that issue, right? And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about, uh, so for example, the stuff that have been requested to relocate, right? And I get the excerpts and I and then I'll read the whole thing and then I'll, and it's, yeah, okay, definitely. So that's now moved into the adult collection, so it still exists there. And there's gonna be. To go back to that previous meeting where I kind of mentioned some of the Dewey numbers, I actually, after that, I did a couple of searches and I was surprised, to be honest. Uh, that there wasn't as much there. You know, than I thought there could have been. In other words, to me, it seems that there's actually probably more stuff harmful to minors. In the children's section. Than there may be in the adult section, and so when it, when we, when we get through all this and we move everything. Now all of a sudden, all that stuff is moved into the into the adult section, I guess what I'm saying is some of those Dewey ranges I talked about, whether sexuality or or. Or um, in the soci- sociology section, biology, so whatever, uh, I did a few searches on, you know, some of those Dewey numbers. And and I wasn't getting a proliferation of of items within our CLN branches, which makes me think that, you know, we may not have that much of an issue. In in the nonfiction section, um, and you, again, obviously, you're gonna have issues in 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 certain genres, I'm not sure it's every single romance genre. But I mean, obviously, these vampire novels tend to focus on that kind of thing, uh, and they'll be, you know, I I haven't read enough of, let's say, uh. Uh, Patterson, he takes up a whole whack of shelves, whether one of his books happens to have something or not, like that 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 is, I don't know that now, but we were gonna, we're gonna have to know that. Right, like I said before, we're gonna have to know that in order to 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 move forward one way or the other, so. Uh, anyway, that's all I'm saying.
Doctor Stanley?
You know, I'm just not understand. Cause I want you to sell your program if it's good, but I need to understand it, but let's just say you do go through the whole collection, okay, this this book, we've. It's got bad material in it. How is, how is that? Guarded, so to speak, and inaccessible to a child. Like, what good is it do if it's just sitting in a regular collection? Not understanding how, okay, you identify which things are harmful to minors, so say in the adult collection. And you don't segregate him into a different area, so then. How how do, how we safeguarding minors, like that's what I can't understand.
Oh, I I I agree with you a hundred percent, I I actually, I kind of think that's where we ended in the last meeting, I I tried to. Get us down to that, actually, the one fundamental issue that we're gonna deal with is. You know, given the fact that we will have to designate in order to do either option. Once we have designated and we have options. That is the fundamental question, how do we? And this is why if we do segregate to rooms, that is easy. It is easy, it removes a lot of the need for for, you know, any of the staff responsibility, because now. The staff person doesn't have to, not just one staff person, you have multiple staff people each place, right? Doesn't have to, because they just know that's the only spot or that's the only entrance or that's, so it does definitely make life easier. I wouldn't necessarily pitch it for that reason only. All I'm saying is that, I mean, the the question about how do we protect or or. Does designation equal segregation, and if it doesn't, what does it, what good is the designation? Well, the designation is, the designation is good at a technical level, like go back to your self-checkout, self-checkout wouldn't be possible. This would be built into the tech. Which, again, I go to my tech guy and say, hey, we gotta make this happen, and we have to find a way to, right, so it would be built into, the the checkout isn't a hard one for me. Because if if the minor comes to the desk with a book which is designated as harmful to minors, they can't check it out. Because the law says we are not allowed to provide this to them, if the parent were standing beside them and they wanna check it out on their card. You know, we're not in local print this, right, so, so that's different, and that's what this this policies are based on, it says it all in there, right, so, um. The big issue is my example of Johnny walking through the building and and a staff person. Kind of knowing where everything is, but let's say, what do we do with that designation, do we put a spine label on it? Do we have signage, specific signage besides the main signs, which says you're crossing the threshold, right? Besides that signage, is there other signage, to me, the library group would be signage, making use of tech. Right, the power of it and designations like that, to be able to say this is harmful, this isn't harmful, one of my questions to the to legal, which again, we haven't had a chance to. Uh, to um, to speak, right, but, you know, what obligation does the library have to make evident to minors what isn't harm? What is or isn't harmful to minors in the adult collection, like, what is the law saying about what we have to do? Is a spine label reasonable, is that a reasonable step, is signage a reasonable step, right? What obligations do we have? To designate what is or isn't harmful, because a lot of my policies is based on the principle that the parents are responsible. And we are only responsible for making sure that we haven't, you know, that we've taken the reasonable steps. Right, and the parents are responsible for everything else, but I wanna help parents out, and if that means some form of. Visible designation that makes it easier, because if it makes it easier, people say, oh, you just made it easier for them to see it, but we're not talking about bad Johnnys. Who want to do something bad, that's on the parents. The library just needs to be concerned about doing what's right from the professional library perspective, right, so. To me, the biggest issue is actually the browsing. Right, it's not the checkout, because checkout is an actual, it's a technical issue, we can, depending on the power of our ILS, we can solve some problems there. The the only, I don't have an answer for it, I'm suggesting answers, but the issue is just one aspect. Of libraries experience, and this goes back to the other, when when I first pitched the directive and people that I don't wanna have to go. And I I was saying, hey, we have a special collection in Post Falls, I don't wanna have to go to Post Falls to get an item, so that's fair. But there's so many different ways that the library interacts with the patron, it can be browsing, it can be a known entity search, they know exactly what they want, they put it on hold. The kid needs four vampire books, the parent could put it on hold for them. And on their card, they could come in and get it, there's all sorts of ways that they can do whatever they wanna do. I'm only concerned about the library should be doing and the structure of how we should have things, so that we are. Being responsible for what we're responsible for, so to me, the one issue, which I I know trustee boss wants me to. Satisfy and prove is what about the browsability? Checkout can be solved by checkout desk, what the ILS has on the database, what this item in hand, self-checkout could be solved. The one issue is browsability, what we want, and and the legal counsel said, we we kind of want to give. Everybody the chance to move through the library freely. Right, that's fair, that's the way it always been, so that browsability is really the issue. And I I don't have an answer, I'm I'm agreeing with you, that that is the question, that is the fundamental question to be asked, do we segregate? Because we could designate? Or because we could designate, do we do something different?
Sure. Trust Hannah?
I like the idea of identifying the items and labeling them some capacity, that's a physical label. Um, just as you have a label on things that say explicit, I think, or something on CDs or or certain movies that are rated. And it may also satisfy. Uh, trustee, uh, Otis and's concern of stumbling upon a book that she didn't wanna see, but she opens it up or takes it home and reads it and finds out, wow. Surprise, I didn't know that was in there, if the book's been labeled, well, then she's been forewarned. And it would help maybe a staff member see, uh, kid's got this um, bright orange sticker or something on on a on a book. I don't think it would necessarily be a lure that they would run over there to get it, but. Staff should know where they are and if they can see them with it, so I think that might be an interesting option to just leave it, integrate it into the. Collection, but they're marked in some some capacity and they're also can't be checked out by by a minor or two self-checkout. Just think it's interesting idea.
Sure. Uh, trustee boss?
Yeah, so I I guess I've I've still got just a couple of issues, uh, mainly for the director to try to explain to me, but. Putting. An indicator on the spine, I. I don't really see how that's a solution if you're going to have them scattered around different places, different rows. Different shelves. Because I I don't see how a librarian is gonna remember that, oh, yeah, there was three books in that row and two in this one. I I I don't think that's a good solution, I think they have to all be moved. To one location and you know when that binder goes into that area. That that they've gone into a danger zone, instead of trying to keep track of books with no markers on the spine. The, I guess the second thing is. A lot of these books, especially the ones that are bad, have uh, reviews, like booklooks.com or. Booklooks, they've already got the summary, they got the pages, they've got the. Actual paragraphs right there. It isn't, uh, trustee Hanley may find it hu- hard to believe, but it, I don't. Think it's really very hard for the librarians to go look up these reviews. And and know this book is bad and not even have to go read it, they just can find the. Paragraphs and 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 look at the review, so I think booklooks and and I'm sure there's other. Reviews of the books, but I I think somebody, a lot of people have made the librarian's jobs easier to identify. I don't think they have to go through and read all the books to find them, and then I guess the third thing is. I I still. Think that. Um, the the child needs some warning that he's going into a bad area, it isn't just. That. You know, we put something on a spine, it's, he he needs to know, stay away from there and you will. We shouldn't be trying to trick the the minor. Into crossing into these little places that are bad, and I just, I I. I I guess what it comes down to is, are you gonna follow the? Wanna follow the traditional Dewey Decimal System way of classifying books and saying only. This bad nonfiction, it can't be over here because it's right beside some fiction, it has to be clear over here three rows earlier. If you're gonna follow the traditional way the adult sections were set up between with the Dewey Decimal, I. Don't think you can put them all together, so maybe you can just answer that, are you, are you willing to? For these kind of books. Not not follow the Dewey or the traditional way of classifying them and put them all in one place. And and I I was during the campaign, I myself was starting to say, well, let's put. Marks on the spine and people, I had uh. Citizens telling me that's a bad idea, because now you're bringing the attention to the book, you shouldn't bring attention to it, well, I I also kind of thought we should put. To protect CLN, we should put a yellow label on that said, warning, if you hand this book to a minor, you could be. Arrested because of the Idaho law and be subject to one year in. And uh, county prison with the sheriff because you violated the minors provided uh. Harmful material to minors, so maybe the library isn't gonna get arrested, but if some. You know, uh. Adult took that book and walked out into the parking lot and gave it to a child. Maybe they should have a yellow warning on, I'm saying, don't give this to a child, but anyway, that was. An idea that I was proposing, put put on the spine, but that would protect CLN. Anyway, if if you can answer questions, how you classify or organize the books, that would help me.
Okay.
Yeah, again, so first I just wanted, I know there's probably some librarians out there that that maybe listen in. Um, I I I like to do things traditionally, um, I'm always not even in favor of genre, if I can like taking the genres out and putting them together. I'm kind of a traditional, uh, you know, maybe twentieth century librarian, uh, so I I prefer. If we can stick to our professional standards and do that, I'm I'm not a huge fan of us trying to, you know, mimic bookstores or 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 or. Or change things, uh, so so obviously, what I'm saying that is, because I I'm sure I'd even get backlash within the professional library community if I'm saying, hey, we should put something on the spine. Um, but I'm trying to solve a problem uh here and I'm trying to uh, to to actually to satisfy it. Um but I'm trying to solve a problem uh here and I'm trying to uh to to actually to satisfy uh, you know, the legislation uh when it comes to the adult or general collection. So uh just just saying that because uh um I know there'll be some librarians who probably say you shouldn't be putting any kind of reading system on books and stuff. Uh but we live in different times and the legislation, it guides our guides our hand. So um anyway, uh that being said, uh it just, again, to me, it's the designation, i- i- the question isn't whether we are um to me, to me, I guess the question, maybe it's more a legal question is by putting a designator, but not segregating, are we doing enough to protect the minor between the ages of ten and seventeen when they browse freely through the general collection? Are we doing enough? If a lawyer and and the legislature says, yes, you are, that is a reasonable step, you are doing enough, then I would say, great, we're doing enough. Because in a whole other discussion in another forum, parents can get together in some focus group and ask themselves whether they're doing enough. One of our trustees just mentioned that he always accompanied his children to the library, right? As a parent, I probably did that too, right? So I'm not, and then what our legal counsel said last time, we're not really supposed to be getting too involved in siding with one parenting style over another. So I I'm not sure whether we need to go down the route or beyond the question of what do they do with the designation? Does it blur them in? Is it a, like, to me, the only question is whether it's enough for us, right? If we're willing to use the power of our databases and create technical services, uh, you know, avenues towards designating what is harmful, because we have to one way or the other, whether it's moved or not segregated. And so no matter what, we have that potential. And then my next question is simply, if we were to choose something like spine labels, I'm not saying that's the only option. But if we were to choose something like spine label labels, is that enough for us? We can't, we can't take the full responsibility for that the parents are responsible for. We shouldn't take the full responsibility for parents are responsible for. If we if we designated this is harmful to minors and the minor takes that, they can't check it out, they won't be able to. But if they take it off the shelf because they were free to browse around, so parents gave them authority to browse around, and they go to a place to sit and read it and they're scandalized and lose their innocence, is that on the library? Because we already designated, we had a sign which says, don't go past this point if you're an unaccompanied minor or 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 whatever the sign says, are you aware that by on this point, have you read these policies? Maybe the policies are even on the sign, right? We've already taken, this is why the legal council needs to step in and give us what reasonable steps means, right? Because there are a lot of reasonable steps we're taking here, right? Way beyond anything we have to do in the twentieth century. And it's fair, because the twenty first century is a whole other animal and we're trying to deal with it. But simply, do we need to go down the route of discussing too much about what parents should be doing or what their responsibilities are? If we've taken the time to 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 designate, to to uh, you know, determine what in what in the general collection would be harmful to minors. I use the term general collection now more frequently, right? If if we can designate what's in the general collection that's harmful to minors, uh uh so this law, the spirit of this law, it was really about the children's section, right? This law came into being because it was the children's section that was a problem. I'm not sure it came into being because the adult sector maybe it did, but I wasn't here when all the discussions were happening. But I don't think it had to do with the adult, sorry, the general collection. And yet here, we're still going to go down there, we're going to do what we can to provide protection, awareness, understanding. Basically, the library, when it comes right down, it's about information literacy, it's about lifelong learning. So we're following that mandate by just taking steps to help people understand, right? What our collection is. So again, no matter what we have to designate, question is, do we have to segregate? Or are there mechanisms that are satisfactory within the context of the law, within our profession, right? Where, and I don't see any reason why we can't behave like librarians of the past, library staff of the past, right? There's nothing stopping us from doing that, that's something a conversation I have with my whole CLN team. If if you want to be a CLN, this is, this is the direction CLN is going, this is how we work, this is what it means to be a librarian in the library. You take these responsibilities seriously. And that's a conversation for me and my staff and 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 we want to prove that to the community because that's what the community asked for by, what, to the trustees. So I just don't want to, I I just don't want to immediately jump to room and segregation without exploring the possibility of what power we might have with the tech services department, with what we can do with the designations, how that can play out in the adult collection. Sorry, general collection. And that's all I'm trying to get, is that I I don't necessarily want to jump right to rooms and, I don't say rooms. I don't want to jump right to segregation being the answer. Designation has to happen no matter what. Once we're able to designate, do we have to segregate? Are there other options? Which option would be the best for everybody, right? Because yes, we need to protect families and children, but not any more than we have to in the sense that the parent is really responsible for that. It's the parent who should be protecting their children, right? It's the parent, and we shouldn't do anything to make it more challenging for them. And we should make every effort to make it easier for them. And I I I'm just suggesting that maybe designation without segregation is enough. Is is something that 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 community, those community members would say, thank you, that is enough, we got it from here. We'll tell our kids, listen, hey, you know, if it's got this label on, don't read it. And I'm just offering a a potential solution. Once we get past the point of saying, yes, obviously we have to designate, we have to know what's there. Otherwise, we can never satisfy the law.
Okay, um so our time is up for this section, but we're kind of ahead of time because we had some other things that didn't take as much time, so we could keep going. Or um we do also have a motion on the floor that we need to vote on. Uh what do you guys want to do, would you rather get out of here earlier? Should we just keep discussing until about uh five fifteen? Uh trustee Robinson?
Well, what do you mean by leave early and there's a motion? I mean, should we just take care of that motion? You know, isn't there, don't we have one from last time too that's out floating around? I swear to God, we did, or we tabled something or?
Yeah, I don't have my agenda from the last meeting, so I'm not sure.
I would prefer if we didn't leave motions dangling.
Yeah, well, no, I was saying that we we could vote on it and then just end the section. Um but we we need to give our director uh direction, which way we want to go. Um but you had said that this motion would not take care of the issue.
So the issue in my in my practical case, like basically, I get these requests for relocation. You know, for the most part, they're obviously going to contain material that against, it's against the law. And they're going to have to be moved. And I tell the people, the response that they're going to be moved to a an area designated for adults only. But trustees are, you know, it's it's pursuant to the those decisions. So I can keep doing that, right? And I and even without the request for relocation, I'm as soon as I get into my office and I can set that up and things can flow more freely, I'm going to begin that project. And so that's all, that'll all be taken. The decision you make about this is going to end up impacting sort of some infrastructural things. If the decision comes back that you want to move to rooms, then I have to figure out what the rooms are. If if you say you want to segregate to shelves, then I got to figure what those are. So whether that happens tonight or the next day, that that isn't, I'll do it whenever. I just want you guys to make the best possible decision you can uh moving forward. So I don't want to force the decision to be made. Um I'm just letting you know that I can continue uh doing what I think I was brought here to do and to and to make CLN the best library it can be. Uh I'll continue doing that. The only thing that hangs in the balance for me is is whether or not I'm going to eventually have to um shift to the idea of segregating. I could move it, so I guess what I'm saying is the whole desert, which is a big chunk of the job, the whole designating of what's harmful to minors is 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 happening, it's going to keep happening, I'm going to keep working on it. I can turn to technical service, say, hey, what are we going to do with this ability, right? So that's already happening. The only thing that's hanging in the balance for me that the trustees would need to decide on, that's that's important to me practically speaking, is are we going to segregate or not? Um and and again, if that didn't happen tonight, that's fine, I'm getting into the sense of the flow here, where it's month to month. And we don't want to have special meetings all the time necessarily. Um so it's just, it's just a little slower pace, but not a slower pace on solving the key issue, which is the law itself and and the and the harmful children in this minor's collection, that's fine, right? That's all moving forward. Um but, yeah, sorry, I'm fine.
Hi, trustee Amber Setti?
Could I, could I hear uh trustee boss's motion one more time? Was it for a room, was it for segregation or?
Okay, his motion was that we create an adult access only area.
Area, area.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Okay, trustee Hannah?
Yeah, so if we're having, I have one more piece of discussion point first, I wanted to finish. I do think that the law came about because there was so much material harmful to minors in the minors' collections throughout the state, the country. As we're taking this around, I kind of think I like the idea of designation integration. Labeling these things adequately, if if legal says that's an, that's that's a reasonable step, that's sufficient. Um between um designating already, we should even go through the collection no matter what, no matter which way we go here, and being able to leave the materials in their proper genres within the physical plant. And if they're labeled, well, then an adult shouldn't stumble on something by mistake because it's been labeled. And a minor should be able to be seen, I would assume with that. Um but at the very least, if we're going to segregate, I prefer it not be in a locked area, just be a identified area. It was, I don't know, with signage. And then the staff can be that much more vigilant and watch that area. But I, I'm not, I just, you know, I prefer not to move it to a separate area. But if we did, I don't think it should be a locked up, stigmatized, special area in a sense that it has to be special, who to get into the place or something. But I kind of like the idea of identification or designation, going through it and then integrating it, leaving integrated in the collection, but adequately labeled and adequate electronic steps built in so the material cannot be checked out of the library.
Uh trustee boss, do you? Tony has.
Yeah, I I've, I I think.
That's all right, no worries.
Okay, you'll be doing a lot. All right, go ahead, trustee boss.
Yeah, all I all I'm trying to say is, I I think we should, before we leave today, we should answer the question for the director. And the, my motion is saying a adult access only area. Later, we can decide if it's going to be locked, if there's going to be a separate room, if it's going to be at every library or how we do it. But my motion is specifically to move them all to one place. So in Pinehurst, maybe it's the far end of that row, just move them to one place. If that doesn't work, you know, we can look at the cabinet later or something. But move them to one place, that's all I'm asking. Can we vote on that? Move it to one place called access, adult access only. And just.
Interesting.
I mean, I mean, support and support of what trustee boss is saying. I'm reading back over the uh the law here in um uh section two. Um if we go down to uh two, no, three, three A. And I think as the director was using the words reasonable steps, and that is in here. But I don't think that um there's an, there's not an and in there, there's an or. In other words, the institution made available material harmful to minors. It doesn't say and took reasonable steps, it says or didn't take reasonable steps. Which means the first pause is a requirement. We cannot make it available, to my, make it available means browsers finding it. So I second his motion.
Okay, so uh trustee Robinson?
Twice now, I've heard uh trustees, I just, I just want to be clear that um like the director was saying, books in the children's section is what this really is about, getting the harmful to minors out of there in another place. And the all access, whatever we're calling it right now, um, you know, has always had books that are potentially harmful to minors. But twice now, I've heard trustees say that an adult should get a warning on the book so that they don't happen upon something that they find harmful to themselves. And that's just been, like I said, introduced two times by two different people. Uh we need to really focus on what this is about and not start thinking we need to warn adults about a book they happen to get off the shelf.
Okay, so I'm thinking, uh, well, I uh I'm offering an amendment to the motion that I think would make things more clear. Um hopefully, then we can do it all in one fell swoop, that we replace the word and uh with a segregated, so that then the whole motion would read uh that we create a segregated adult access only area. Would that answer your question?
Uh yeah, essentially, the idea of segregation or integration is what's on the table because designation is a given. So if you're going to vote that for segregation, then that will inform me of of my future. Uh if you vote for integration, then likewise, so yeah, I would say uh segregation versus integration after designation.
Okay, um so, okay, so then I'm uh moving that we amend it um to read that we create a segregated adult access only area.
Uh sure.
Uh yeah, we we do small, small, our words rules for small words, so we don't need a second. Uh but thank you. Uh so are we ready to vote? Uh yes, trustee boss?
Um I think the word and, I'm I'm sure what you're saying, and like A N D or N A N. And was just a prefix to the, to the uh word adult that starts with A. So instead of say a adult, you say an adult. So I don't really know what you're accomplishing by saying, by what you're doing. And is what you would say for adult, but you're, I think what you, what you're really doing is, it's not the A or N. It's the, you're putting in as designated as opposed to just, are are you just adding the word designated? I I guess, clarify, please.
Um actually, I think I said segregated. Um and so I was just changing it instead of and because the next word previously started with A and just changing that to a segregated adult access only area.
Well, that's.
You did it again.
But that's, that's right, that's fine, I don't know that it clarified, because adult access only is segregated. But I I could go along with that.
Uh well, because we can either do integrated in the adult section or within the general adult section, or we could segregate it, but it would just be its own thing. Um so are we ready to vote on the amendment, which would make the whole motion read that we create a segregated adult access only area? You guys ready to vote?
Is that we voting?
Just on the amendment, just whether we're having the amendment or not.
A segregated, say again.
Uh that we create a segregated adult access only area. As opposed to just having these books interspersed in the general collection.
So we're mo- we're we're voting to amend the amendment, but we're not voting issue.
Well, we would be voting just on the amendments, not on the whole motion. So uh so the motion is to amend the motion, the previous motion to say that we create a segregated adult access only area. Okay, so now are we ready to vote?
No, what's the original, because I don't know what the exact change is.
Uh the original is that we create an adult access only area, which we have to do anyway. And so it really doesn't answer.
Hmm, I got you.
The question that the director needs.
Got you.
Okay.
So this is, this is basically saying, we're not voting for integration. This this is saying, we're voting for like.
Changing the words.
Designation and segregation.
No, I just said segregated.
Segregated, right? To make sure I'm clear, I got, I don't want to vote, yeah, no, this, yeah, well, we as far as I understand what's happening here, the trustees are voting on whether or not we will segregate materials in the general collection which are deemed harmful to minors. The other option would be not to segregate, but to integrate. If you vote to se- just so that we know, if you vote to segregate now, then all the, and this is kind of why I was asking sort of not do that necessarily, because if you vote to segregate now, then there's no point in me pursuing any potential power than in.
then there's no point in me pursuing any potential power that into the designation provided us. I, I don't need to worry about labels, I don't need to worry about a lot of things because you've just simply put it all aside and say, no, we're definitely going to, to move it to a room, a shelf, whatever, segregate, we're definitely going to segregate. If, if you're asking your opinion, I, I, I'm not sure that's the best do, because I'm trying to present policies which would suggest we don't do that. In my directive, I put an appendix, appendix on there which said it is a possibility, and I suggest the possibility of just the one room. And Plasse, trustee Plasse is correct, that we're, we're not deciding what policy that's going to govern this segregation. We're not talking about any of that, or how it's going to implicate, you know, how it's going to develop the library card for minors, like none of that's happening here. But it is the fundamental, and I'm not saying don't do it, I asked you for the fundamental, this is the fundamental question. Do you want, and are we committing to segregate the materials that are harmful to minors in the general collection? I want to stress that, in the general, like, we're not voting about, about the kids anymore.
So adult collection.
This is, yeah, the, the adult collection, right? Because, and it's not about adult access only, because it is already adult access only. And the very principle that we talked about in the last discussion. The principle is the whole building is adult access only, because you can't go into that building under the age of twelve, under the age of ten without an adult. And then between that age and seventeen, there's implied authority by your parent, because we don't act in local parental, so we're not going to check people at the door, do you have the right to be in there? There, it's implied that they have it there. So only people allowed in the building theoretically, I guess, are adults. And anyone who isn't an adult is allowed in there by their parent or legal guardian. We're going to assume that they're not just freely willing, just walking around without their parents, we're going to assume they have that permission. Maybe that's wrong, I, I don't have the legal counsel here, so, but anyway, uh, yeah, so this is the major decision. And just so we're clear, we're vote, the vote is once the material in the general adult collection is designated as harmful to minors, what do we do with it? We're voting to segregate it as opposed to integrating it and taking into account any of the possibilities of robust conduct policy, robust children's thing, robust collection card for minors, all that stuff goes by the by, because we don't need any robustness anymore, because all we're going to do is just going to segregate it. So that's, so we're clear, I just want to make, all the cards are on the table, that's actually what's happening.
Okay, yes, then that's what I thought you wanted direction on, um, that you need to know, you know, which way we want.
Well, that's, so when I, so then I said that I want you guys to make the best decision possible, that, 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 I mean, you were the elected officials and the community wants you to do this and it wants you to make, so that's totally fine. I, I just, my whole idea of a, I'm going to start working on the designation just means that that's already happening, so I don't want you necessarily rushed into it. Right, I don't need to know the answer to that question tonight, okay, that's kind of what I was saying, when I said, listen, this is how it's going to move forward, I'm still going to do all the designation and I'm working on it behind the scenes. So I was trying to give you guys more time to look at it, right? Uh, because we never even looked at all these policies, we didn't get past, you know, two C on the first policy to look at how it actually works together. Like I tried to create a real robust structure within which we could operate. But all this, which is like, it wouldn't matter because segregation just produces the need for a lot of this stuff. And, and I still want to give that, not, not give that a fair shake as a potential option for CLM moving forward. Um, so I don't want to, I don't want you to do this vote under the impression that I'm saying, please, please give me an answer tonight. I'm not saying that about this, the crucial issue, segregate, integrate. But it'd take me months to do the designations anyway. Right? And I, I agree with, uh, you know, trustee Plasse, that there's a lot of stuff on the table that makes our job easier. Uh, what's the, clean books for kids, uh, those other websites, they make the job easier for sure. But I have to be able to make a decision based, there's a, there's a part in that law about, you know, taking, 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 or into the whole, right? So I have to read it. I can't say I took, I can't, I can't say whether it's me or one of my staff, we can't say, yes, we satisfied that requirement of, of looking at it as a whole if we only read the excerpts. Right? There's a lot more to it than, the excerpts, the excerpts are enough for the most part, when you're looking at the law, straight up, no, no doubt. I'm just saying that it, it will take me time to do the designation part of this. So whether you decide tonight about the segregation or the integration doesn't change how much I have to do in, let's say, the next two or three months. That makes sense, or even, even two months, so, so I don't, you can do whatever you want, you're the trustees, I'm here to serve you. I just want to make it clear that I'm, I'm not the one who's pressuring that this decision be made tonight.
Okay, well, I just wasn't like feeling pressured, it's just like, would this be helpful? So trustee Henning?
Yeah, so it's my understanding that designation is going to happen regardless which direction we go here. But if we vote in the affirmative on the motion that's on the floor, that's saying we are going to segregate, is that, is that the proper understanding of what is in that motion? We're saying basically, we already know, it's not even part of the motion, that staff is going to designate and go through the whole collection anyway. But if we vote in the affirmative on the motion, is that saying we are going to segregate the material that's deemed harmful to minors?
Uh, if, if my motion to amend it was passed and then we voted on the original motion, yes. So, um, trustee Robinson?
I, I just don't think it's a good idea, while, while we're going through policies, and it's been done before, start having motions on every section as we go through. Uh, so I'm against this motion being passed right now, or even voted on right now. I mean, I don't care if we vote on it, but I just don't think it's a good idea and I think policies, if you're supposed to go through them, then there should be a motion on passing them. Not motions for each little sentence, like a motion to change something. We can have a discussion on changing it and just change it. But making a motion makes it so much more permanent when we haven't even looked through the others.
Um, sure. Yeah, we, we haven't typically done that on this board, but according to Robert's rules, it is perfectly permissible.
Well, we have been doing it on this board, trustee Plasse.
So there's a motion on the table and we have to deal with the motion. You can either table it or you, uh, you, you can't ignore or just walk away from the motion. And the motion does not say, when we say segregate, the motion does not say anything about whether we're going, how we're going to designate the book. I, I fully expect there will be further policy development that will explain how it gets put in the card catalog, how it gets put on the spine, how it gets on a, maybe a list that's available or something to the patrons. We're, I, I, I do not intend this motion to mean that we're not going to do anything to put designation on the book. I, I fully mean for this motion to just say we're not just going to leave it scattered around in the adult area. They're going to get get grouped together into one place that are easily identified. And we can call that segregated, uh, and that's fine, but.
Segregated.
It is segregated, uh, but the director says, you know, it's an adult access only area, but it's not. We're letting sixteen, fourteen year olds wander around all the way through it. Minors access it, so it is not an adult access. To him putting this in the policy, saying that the parents are responsible, doesn't make it adult access only. And I want, the, the motion is to put the material in one place and it doesn't have to be locked, or we can decide that later, but one place that the children, or the minors do not go into. So that's, that's all I'm asking is let's resolve this now.
Okay, um, I'm in agreement, are you guys ready to, so that we don't have a motion and an amendment hanging, should we go ahead and vote on this? Okay, uh, so my motion was to amend the original motion to, um, replace the word and with a segregated so that the original motion would read that we create a segregated adult access only area. So right now we are only voting on the amendment. Uh, so, uh, all those in favor of the amendment to add, or to replace and with a segregated, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, and any nos? Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion, the original motion is now amended to say that we create a segregated adult access only area. And so all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
No.
Okay, uh, so we have three ayes, an abstention, and a no, the ayes have it. And so the motion's passed that we create a segregated adult access only area. Okay, and now we do need to move on to the next section of our agenda, a response to public comment. Hey trustee Henning?
I'm going to put it out here on the table, um, and a few different denominations of money. Any here, a nickel there, a dime there, a quarter. And in my pocket, this is again in response to public comment, a twenty dollar bill. And look at those and wonder what they have in common. All happen to say, in God we trust. And if we think way back to the beginning of the meeting today, and we said our pledge of allegiance, it said one nation under God. Did I say God at the meeting? I'm sorry, no. I would like to publicly thank trustee Karen Campbell for her time and efforts during her short tenure on the CLM board. It's most unfortunate that circumstances outside of her control led to her resignation. I'm proud of the fact that she publicly shared how her Christian faith influenced her work and decisions while a part of this board. I too want it known to Mike that my Christian and Catholic faith guides me in my personal life and yes, also in my public life here on this board. For many who endlessly preach tolerance for just about anything, well, you're going to have to tolerate me for what I am. And I'm one who believes that God's law trumps everything. So how does that relate to the CLM? One of our duties as a trustee is to protect the innocence of children. And come judgment day, I for one do not want to be cast into this sea with a millstone about my neck for not doing my job. So I come to this board as a package deal. You get me for my education, my career and life experiences. And yes, just as the public got with trustee Campbell, I will bring my religion and believe that Christ is a king to guide me in executing my duties as a trustee. Those are my comments.
Thank you, actually, mine were along the same lines, it just that, I would hope that those are always calling, uh, those who are always calling on others to tolerate would be tolerant themselves and not exhibit anti-religious bigotry. And leave it as a staff commentary on our education system, previous judicial activists and mainstream propaganda sources. So many people believe almost the exact opposite of what our founding fathers wrote First Amendment for. We have any other comments?
Sure.
Uh, trustee Plasse?
My comment on that whole scenario, trustee Campbell, I, I believe she was entitled, it was her chance to make a comment, she's totally entitled to do that, or there was no government action taken by us, no motions. She, she was totally entitled to do that. What I would like to ask the public and even trustees is maybe let's not concentrate on biblical quotes. The, the, the world is so far from God right now and the public. Everybody, please look at natural law. Natural law is how we're made. Natural law is about husband and wife, it's about self-defense. It's about a father of a family being in charge of the family and being able to make decisions and defend his family. That's where, that's all, all of the Second Amendment, all of these laws are natural law. And what we're doing in the library by protecting children is natural law. This allowing pornography or, uh, obscene obscenity to children and minors is a absolute violation of natural law. And doesn't matter if, what religion you are. We all should be able to come to that conclusion because we're all made and we all follow natural law. So if, if, uh, the opposition would address things in terms of natural law, I think the trustees on the board would have commonality, we can have a, something we can agree on to as a starting point for discussion, so please research natural law and, uh, let's, let's see if we can have it a common point with that. That's my comment.
Okay, um, and it's the response to public comment? Yes, all right, so I make sure that, well, I mean, because we're not supposed to be debating back and forth.
Sorry, go ahead. It's as much as the comment as everybody else's has been. I, I agree with what trustee Plasse just said, I think it's a very good idea. And yes, having to do with public comment, um, of course, anybody has a right to give their religious opinion. It's just you have to sometimes be careful because if decisions look to be made on that religious opinion, other people can come at you for that decision you've made, and we have this very important law that was just passed, and we need to pass it on, what did he say, natural law.
Okay, uh, if there are no further comments on, uh, responses to public comments, we will move on to number fifteen, the steps in the future agenda requests. Do we have any? Uh, trustee Henning?
Well, I guess mine's more of a question, so are we going to continue? Are we going to have the director rework the draft policies now in response to where, to our direction going with segregation of the collection? Is that, I, I'm not sure how that fits in, but we need to finish these policies obviously, so.
Right.
And, and I think we need to know if, if we decided to segregate the collection to harmful minors, we want to have the staff have time to do their homework before the next meeting. So I guess I'm asking is do we, do we put all of the policies that were up right now that were drafted for today's meeting and carry those forward to the next meeting?
Um, yeah, I kind of assumed that, you know, we needed direction when this diverges from the policy drafts you've presented, so you would need to, um.
Yeah, I'll, uh, it'll take me some time to, to think about process, but, but that's fine. Uh, the only pressing issue with the next meeting is that we do have to cover the internet use policy because it falls within the three years and it was twenty twenty. Yeah, so, so that'll be on the table for sure, but I, I think, I, I, I can have these ones ready for that meeting too, and it's just a big question of how much do we want to deal with that, I mean, because it will have the internet use policy for sure. On the calendar was the computer use policy as well. They're pretty decent, like they're pretty, they're more than one page, right, they're multiple pages, so, um, anyway, uh, I, I will do my best to have this packet revised based on the decision tonight. Uh, at least to some extent, ones that are most, um, relevant to it. And then also have internet policy and hopefully also the computer use, but we're on the pitch line would be the computer use because it's not, you know, required, so.
Okay, sure, all right, uh, yes, trustee.
Question. The last meeting, we were going back and forth between nine and thirteen ages on the, uh, minor, a lower end of the minor. That wasn't actually voted on as I recall, right?
Yeah, it was kind of a consensus, but it's only a draft, so I mean, it can totally be changed later. Okay, so if there are no future agenda requests, we will move on to the next section, which is set special on regular meeting dates. Uh, so the December ninth reopening of Post Falls is still a soft date. Now it's a hard date now, okay, uh, all right, and then our next regular meeting is December nineteenth at Post Falls. Um, we have any special meeting dates? One, we, good. All right, well then we are on to our final, uh, final section adjournments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will be adjourned.
Okay, I have a note that we adjourn, all of the fader say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is unanimous here now.